Good evening. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Evanston City Council of Monday, September 18th. Mayor Daniel Biss could not be with us this evening, so I'm serving as Mayor Pro Tem. I'm Claire Kelly, Councilmember for the First Ward. Would the clerk please call the roll? Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma?
Here.
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Sefardan?
Here.
Councilmember Ravel?
Here.
Councilmember Reed? Councilmember Harakatis?
Here.
Was that Councilmember Reed here or?
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
Great, seeing as we have a quorum, we'll begin with, I think we'll skip right to the City Manager Public Announcements. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem. Kelly, members of the council, Clerk Mendoza. This evening, we have a request from Chairman Bush of the Parks and Rec Board to present some of their recommendations as far as related to CIP projects. So with that, we'll call up Chairman Bush and we'll bring up the presentation.
Good evening, councilmembers.
Good evening.
I was here a couple of weeks ago. My name is Rob Bush, and as the manager has said, I am the Chair of the Park and Recreation Commission for the City of Evanston. I am a 40-plus-year resident of the city and I would say a proud member of this community. Before I go into what we have as our recommendations for the CIP program, I want to put this conversation in some context. One of the reasons that I moved to Evanston and my family moved to Evanston and we've stayed in Evanston is that there really are a number of four pillars that attract people to come move to a community and to stay in a community. Good schools, good parks, good retail and commerce, and good government. And I was going to say that as far as the Parks Program goes, the Parks Department, that we were at a crossroads, but we passed a crossroads over a decade ago. We are truly at a crisis. And part of what I'm going to be challenging you all about is to commit at least 5% of your $400 million budget to creating, maintaining, and renovating the parks in this city. I don't think that's too much to ask. And when I say "I," I'm speaking on behalf of the full Park Board. All of the things that are going to be presented to you were unanimously approved by the Park Board, so that these are not just from me, these are from the full Park Board. Currently, we are spending less than 2% of your budget on operating, maintaining the parklands. And this discussion only relates to parks. It's not dealing with recreational programs. That's perhaps a conversation for a different time. And last, to put Evanston in some comparative context with other communities nearby, the city has hired a consultant who has done a number of, has done and will do other meetings for the public. And at one of the last meetings held at the, excuse me, the New Crown Center, there was a board put up that showed that Evanston contributed $31,000 in operating expenditures per acre of parkland. The Village of Buffalo Grove contributed $53,000 per acre of parkland. The Village of Skokie used $196,000, almost $200,000, in operating expenditures per acre of parkland. And Oak Park, as I've commonly known as Evanston West, used almost $250,000 a year in operating expenditures per acre of parkland. So we have, we, the Park Board, have come up with 10 priorities which we believe are essential for the City Council to approve going forward as part of, whether it's CIP or whether it's regular park expenditures or whether it's Public Works. We don't care where it comes from, but we just think that if we're going to continue, if we're going to start having good parks in this city again, that we use enough funds in order to accomplish that. The first is to fund the five-year plan to renovate legacy parks. Now, calling these legacy parks is a misnomer. Legacy has a tendency to have a positive connotation. And these parks have anything but a positive connotation. These are 11 parks throughout the city and some, each one of you, virtually each one of you, has at least one of these parks in your ward. And these parks have not had any substantial improvements or investment in at least 26 years. And Public Works has identified any number of pieces of equipment, benches, sidewalks, whatever, that pose significant hazards to the public. And frankly, we'd love to be up here and say, we need to fix all of these all at once. We want you to spend the money, we want you to do it in 2024, so that these parks can be brought up to some standard that we can be proud of. Because behind these 11 parks are any number of other parks. We have 88 parks in the City of Evanston. The rest of them aren't in wonderful condition. The rest of them are ready to join, or many of them are ready to join, this group of legacy parks in dire need of investment, improvement, and renovation. The reason that we, that Public Works, in essence, has set out a five-year plan to renovate these parks is because they don't have either the personnel or the engineering to do it all at once. And so they have set forth a plan that over the next five years, we can bring these parks up to some semblance of usability. Over the next five years, though, you may see, in fact, it'll probably be our recommendation, in order to reduce the potential exposure for liability from injuries, from the condition of equipment at these parks, that they be cordoned off. In fact, we don't even have the personnel to remove them, the dangerous pieces of equipment. And so if some of you get complaints from your residents that some of the equipment in your parks, your neighborhood parks, has been cordoned off with yellow tape, you'll know why. Second is that, related to the first, is to enable the parks to be kept in a positive and attractive condition. You need to fund sufficient staff to maintain them. As I said, we don't have enough people to remove equipment, we don't have enough people to design new parks, new equipment, we don't have enough people to install new equipment. There's more to maintaining parks than going out and cutting the grass. And sometimes I don't think we have enough people to do that. So part of what we are asking you to do is to be sure that as you look at your personnel expenditures and your personnel numbers, that you hire sufficient numbers of full-time and part-time employees and sufficient consultants to design the parks. And we can either do it by in-house consultants or outside consultants to design one park project at a time. But it's vital to have the people in order to perform the work, so that we can have sufficient parks. All right. This one's fun. Pickleball isn't going away. And it's something that the Park Board has been dealing with for at least the last year, having groups coming to us requesting pickleball, having tennis groups coming to us saying, you really can't put pickleball lines on a tennis court, having neighbors coming to us saying, have you heard what pickleball sounds like if you've got two or three or four courts going at the same time? And so we want you to be ready to identify or to accept when we identify a location for a dedicated pickleball center, so that Evanston can be one of those places that attracts pickleball activities, attracts pickleball tournaments, and caters to the growing pickleball population in this town. We have some at Crown Center inside, we have some at the Y, we have some that we have used both for tennis and for pickleball. But while there's been a suggestion of a location at James Park, we are working diligently to try and find someplace that is going to satisfy both the pickleball players and the residents to ensure that we're successful in establishing a growing pickleball activity here in Evanston. Next, the Ecology Center has not been repaired in a long time. And there's a floor joint that needs to be replaced, ventilation of crawl space. We can give you all of the details if you ask for it, but we would certainly request that you allocate sufficient funds to renovate the Ecology Center. It's a great place. I'm sure you have all been there. If you haven't been there, you should go and see what's going on there. There are programs that are being operated out of the Ecology Center. There are personnel who work there full-time. And to not have an Ecology Center that is up to snuff is unfortunate. Next, we ask that you fund the Bent Park Fieldhouse renovation. This fieldhouse has been damaged for over a year from vandalism with, and we have some options being considered, but these really have to be implemented as soon as possible. We were not able to operate a summer camp at this park this past year because we don't have a sufficient building. Bent Park has been a very positive influence in the neighborhood and in the community. And both the fieldhouse and structured restrooms, rather than porta-potties, are essential to have a positive, continue to have positive influence in that community. Next, in 2021, the Public Works Department and the Park and Recreation Board did a study amongst the city residents on where to put a dog park. Right now, we have one dog park, Pooch Park, that no one can walk to, that we share with the Skokie Park District, and that is subject to the auspices of the MWRD. We finally have a dog beach, which is subject to the vagaries of Lake Michigan, and a dog beach is not the same as a dog park. For those of you who have used both, I believe you understand the difference between the two. Once ice gets formed on Lake Michigan or gets on the sand, you're not going to be able to use the dog beach at all. So in 2021, 900 of 1,800 respondents said that Clark Square was the primary location for another dog park. And recently, Councilmember Nusma has recommended that there be a dog park put at Gray Park. And so both of these locations would enable significant numbers of local residents to walk their dogs to a dog park, to have a local dog park, and to have something more for 78,000 people than just a single dog park that stuck off by Sam's Club, requiring an automobile to get there. The money in 2021 was designated and allocated after the results of the community study. And it's about time that at least these two locations be designated and funded for dog Welcome, Councilmember Burns, and congratulations on your new addition.
Thank you, sir.
Next, Chandler Gym. Chandler Gym has turned into just a wonderful center for gymnastics and other recreational activities, recreational programs. And in order to both support what we have there now and to increase the opportunity for gymnastics and other recreational programs for mostly young people, funding Chandler Gym upgrades is a significant, would be a significant improvement to both that facility and to the programs that it offers. So we would ask you to fund the Chandler Gym upgrades. Public restrooms have been an interesting topic that we've been discussing at the Park Board for the last several months. And all we're suggesting to you is that as we look at the park facilities, the permanent park facilities, that we make a significant effort to include public restrooms and not just temporary porta-potties as part of those buildings. It allows for more neighborhood programming by the Park and Recreation Department and enables a much greater public safety and public security by having someplace stable and secure to use as a public restroom. Another priority we've identified is to fund the Levy Center Kitchen renovation. This is the primary senior center for Evanston seniors. And the kitchen there is not up to standards. And so the seniors don't have the ability to have the kinds of programs and food service and other kinds of activities that can be supported by a state-of-the-art or even just a modernized kitchen center. And so as one of our priorities, we have established to improve and renovate the Senior Center Kitchen group. Now, that's our 10. As I'm sure you can imagine, we could have tripled this list, but to keep your jaws off the tables, we have kept it to 10. But I'll go back to what I said at the beginning. The parks in this town are in dire need of attention, both from a renovation standpoint, a maintenance standpoint, and a creation standpoint. We have 88 parks in town, but we have, you probably count on one hand, the number of parks large enough to do actual recreational activities. So maintaining local parks is as important as keeping the Little League fields and the football fields and the soccer fields playable. This money, it's not a big ask. 5% of your budget is not a big ask. So in addition to the $100 million lakefront renovation and the $20 million bond debt issues that you're talking about, dealing with this and these identified priorities should be just that, should be priorities for this council and for this community. So if you all have any questions, I have a great deal of support from a number of Park Board members and from Audrey Thompson, who's our executive director, who we cannot say enough good things about. So we appreciate her assistance and we hope that we're helping her, but she's the one who forced me to get up here today. So any questions?
Thank you very much, Chairman Bush.
Thank you.
It's really helpful, and I think we really appreciate you summing, bringing this together into top 10 priorities. Our parks are just so important for equality of living as well as attracting people to our city. I'll take questions. Councilmember Sefardan?
Sure. One thing I want to just clarify, and Luke, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the issue at Bent Park isn't a matter of funding, it's a matter of staffing. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's our biggest challenge right now, is a staffing issue.
But we have the funding to repair the fieldhouse. It's a matter of the staffing to run the project?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other thing is, as we distinguish parks into categories of neighborhood parks and community parks, do we take into account parks where we charge organizations to use them? And are those classified in a different way? And I'm thinking specifically about Cartwright Park, which is, I've seen classified as a neighborhood park, but we charge AYSO to use the field there. Do we prioritize facilities and parks where we charge fees for use?
I think the answer to that is no, but I will ask Laura or Audrey if there's a different... I don't think the fact that we charge for the use of a park offers any greater incentive for us to provide maintenance for it. Of course, if you're going to be using a grass field for soccer, you have to be sure that it's cut.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, and I know Cartwright has its own challenges, particularly when it comes to wet weather and the ability to mow it. And I mean, I've seen soccer games there that are played on some pretty soggy, long, shaggy fields. I know the fees were raised for field usage at James Park for Evanston baseball, and that created a problem. I'll tell you, for them, because my understanding is that the timing of that was after they had set the fees for the spring. You know, my own personal experience, every Saturday, a lot of 10-year-olds from Evanston go to Mount Prospect to play baseball. I'm sure there's a lot of reasons for that, but I mean, you have a lot of Evanston families going to other communities to utilize their facilities. And I think that makes your point, that we need to invest in our own. As far as the Levy Center, what...
Let me just address your fees question. We did raise the fees. It was brought to us a little bit late in the process, but the fees that Evanston charges for the use of fields remains lower than that of most, of all surrounding communities. It's a charge that while it may, in one year, cause some kind of a hiccup amongst the members of that group, over the course of time, it'll be kept in a more regular fashion, and we're not going to be raising fees more than, I think, every other year.
Okay. And the Parks Board has the authority to raise fees without council approval, correct? I think, I mean, that's what happened in this instance.
And if that's what happened, then we did.
Okay. I mean, that may be an ask question. I think in instances where we have one customer, better coordination is something that we could all aspire to.
Yep.
But as it relates to the Levy Center, what type of investment are we looking at in the kitchen? And do we see a path through cooping that investment?
I'll pass that one off to Laura.
Sure. Hello, my name's Laura Biggs. I'm the city engineer, and I apologize because I ran in here without the budget list that says exactly what we propose to spend on Levy Kitchen. But the investment does not really get recouped by the fees that we charge. The kitchen is currently used for rentals, and I believe also just, I think just for rentals, because it's very limited.
Right. But as it stands now, Audrey Thompson, Director of Parks and Rec, as it stands now, there's not a lot of equipment that works in the kitchen, except for the refrigeration. And so with the new hire for our food service coordinator, even having those types of rentals that would use the kitchen space would be very difficult. And so having a renovation for that kitchen would allow us to have additional rentals that would include the kitchen space.
Okay. So you're looking more to update the existing kitchen to do what it's intended to do rather than expand it or...
Right. Yeah, not to.
Okay. And then I think, and this might be part of Laura's, but I think as we prioritize these things, the places where we charge are places where we should invest, because what happens is these organizations either use the fields less or they provide fewer opportunities for practices and games. And then what you get, and this is antithetical to the mission of the Parks Department, is you get Evanston families that are participating in recreation in other communities because their offerings are superior. So I'd hope as we continue this discussion, that we'll look into how can we maximize the use of these facilities and these parks in Evanston for the purpose of Evanston Recreation. And, you know, the big thing that these parks do is, before kids get to high school, it's one of the only ways that kids from around the city interact. And so it's really important that we make sure that we've got facilities all over that are usable in different weather conditions and that are rentable by these organizations and that that's financially feasible for them, because otherwise, like, the whole thing falls apart. So I just encourage, as we continue this discussion, that we plan and prioritize that.
And one of the points that you made, currently, there isn't a connection between what we charge people and money that we recoup for capital improvements. So they are two entirely separate things in the budget.
Yeah. And I mean, we're not a for-profit entity. I mean, like, so, you know, but if you look at, like, the advantage of the turf fields at Robert Crown, it's that schedules are able to be adhered to in a way that they're not at a place like Cartwright where the fields, and I'm not even, it's generous to call them fields. It's painted grass, it doesn't drain. I mean, like, we need to be able to assure our partners that their schedule will work, because a lot of times their seasons are, you know, spring and fall, or weather is unpredictable.
Couple things. One, to answer your question about the cost of the Levy Center Kitchen, it's $400,000 in the Parks Project's budget. And two, I'm glad you brought up the Crown Center field, the turf field. That has a useful life of 10 to 15 years, and it's going to be essential that this council put away enough money to have that field repaired or replaced within those 10 or 15 years. It's a wonderful facility, and it is used all the time.
Is that part of the Crown Maintenance Fund, or is that a separate thing?
That's a separate fund.
Okay. So there is no money currently being set aside?
There is some, but it's not, if it continues to be set at the amount that it's, at the level that it's been set and at the amounts annually, it will not be enough, it will not be close to enough to repair, replace, and operate that field in the kind of condition that attracts the people from Mount Prospect and Skokie and Wilmette and all the other communities to come to Evanston to play on our field.
Okay. And I'm less interested in people from Mount Prospect coming here than people from Evanston having to go to Mount Prospect.
I understand.
I see the value in both, but...
But for the Evanston residents to be able to use that field indefinitely, it's going to need significant investment over the course of years in order to maintain it as an appropriate facility, turf field. And it's, the main advantage of a turf field is that you can play on it during and after a rainstorm. It needs virtually the same amount of maintenance as a grass field does. It doesn't get reseeded, but it gets repellited. It needs to be watered so that you don't have kids suffering shocks from the electricity, the static electricity that gets built up after running on it. So there's a significant maintenance cost. It's just the advantage of being able to use it virtually under any condition.
Yeah. Yeah, and this may be an unfair question to ask you, this may be a more of a Laura question, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but like, what do we need to be setting aside on an annual basis so that people in these seats 10 years from now aren't looking to replace that field on an emergency basis?
I would actually have to do a little bit of research. At the time that we built the fields, we, we calculated it'd be a million to a million and a half to re-carpet the fields. What you're replacing is just the carpet and, and fill, there's a pretty substantial base and other infrastructure that goes into it, and that you do not need to replace every 10 to 15 years.
Okay, and I'll just use one more, and it's an anecdotal example, but in the spring, we had rain here, and James Park was unplayable, but we went to Buffalo Grove and their field was playable. Like, what types of things can we do to increase the likelihood of our parks and our fields that we rent being playable in the case of adverse weather conditions?
We can install a drainage system. Essentially, it's like a glorified French drain that you put under the field, a lot of little pipes that allow the water to drain, then it has to be directed to a rain garden before it goes into any kind of MWRD sewer. And we have that at the north, the northernmost field at James Park. I believe we installed it at one other location, but that's a relatively new thing, we haven't been doing a lot of it because it is pretty expensive to put it in. It is less than artificial turf.
Okay, so how do we do the calculation in terms of upfront investment versus lower utility over the lifetime of a field or a diamond? I mean, what's, is there like an industry standard where we would figure out, like, yes, this is more expensive on the front end, but in exchange, we'll get more days of playability, and even though we're not in this for profit, we'll also get more rental revenue if organizations know that they can rely on our fields and our diamonds to be playable in the spring and the fall?
That is not a calculation that happens, because we invest relatively little into making fields like that. So by the time we built Robert Crown, it was get artificial turf fields, we have to have some, do it. There wasn't really a big thing like, well, if we, we invest this kind of money, then it will, we'll have this many more days playable. It was basically just meeting a minimum standard of what we could supply as a city. And I think when we talk about these underdrain systems, knowing that it's a third of the cost of an artificial turf field, it doesn't work as well, but it works better than having no underdrain system, that was similar. It's like, well, can we try something other than an artificial turf field that works better? Because what we're doing now does not meet the needs.
Okay, and so if we emphasize the lower cost option rather than artificial turf, if we go with fields that drain better, does that require increased staffing? Because if you get a rainstorm at four o'clock, is there someone from Public Works that can do work on the fields? I mean, is that, I, what I want is for scheduled activities to go forward on schedule as much as possible, acknowledging that we don't control the weather. What do we need, what do we need to do that and to meet the standards of our neighboring communities? Besides money? Do we need, I mean, we need money, we need people, we need equipment, what, what are the other needs?
I would need to defer to the Public Works Director on that.
Okay. All right.
Anything else?
Yes, Councilmember Newsma, thank you, Councilmember Sufferden.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Councilmember Sufferden, Sufferden asked a lot of the questions I was going to ask about revenue streams. The Parks and Rec Fund or our Parks Fund, it's not an enterprise fund, you know, we're not intending to make money, nor should we with our Parks and Rec Department, but it doesn't escape my notice that five out of your top 10 recommendations have some potential revenue attached to them. That doesn't necessarily mean they go to the top of the list, but certainly that information is going to be important as we set our priorities.
And, and we didn't set it out like that, we set out the priorities based on what we think would be of greatest advantage to the greatest number of Evanston residents.
Yeah, and that's a good segue to my next question, which is what data do we have on utilization of these parks? Do we have information on number of visitors, number of participants per year, per month, per season?
There are 78,000 people in Evanston. For local parks that have nothing, no activities going on, we probably don't have anything. I, Audrey, you have anything?
And I, I wonder if there's something, this is something we could use the Placer AI.
So I think it just depends on the park. So we can use park permits as one way to look at that. Also, if something is happening in those fields, we can look at that as a way to see how many people are actually frequenting those, those parks. So, yeah, we do have some data for that.
Some data. I would encourage us to look at that Placer AI, which we've begun to look at, that's kind of a new service we have, right? So that might be informative and tell us something that we, answer some questions we didn't even know to ask.
Sure.
And that is also going to be helpful in making sure we're making equitable investments and not overinvesting in one particular type of park or in one particular part of town, which I, I know we're all cognizant of that, but we want, we need the information to make those decisions.
Absolutely.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Reed?
Thank you. First, do you want to note, I flipped on my light when Councilmember Newsma made the comment about enterprise funds, I, I just want to add that I think, given the information that's been put in front of us, I, I think it's important for us to have a better accounting of the operations and the cost for maintenance for our Parks Department, and I think while enterprise funds aren't required to turn a profit certainly, and aren't even required to, you know, meet their costs, and often, sometimes they're subsidized by the general fund, but it would give us a better way to truly understand what we are spending, what we're not spending, what our profits are for the park system, and I would encourage us to continue to look into that, to have that clear accounting for both us and the public. As far as some of the recommendations for, I, I appreciate that you all kept it to a pretty tight list. Can you remind me what the overall request is here, dollar amount? I don't know if I heard you say it earlier.
I think that'll be better for Laura to, because some of these, I think it's like 13 million, but I think Laura has a better.
I guess 5% of.
Oh, you're saying for the entire 5% of.
Well, it's, it's easy to do the math, if you have a 400,000, $400 million budget, 5% of that is, is $20 million.
What is the increase?
Well, it would put you something over Buffalo Grove in the cost per acre, and it would put you significantly continued under the Village of Skokie and the Village of Oak Park. It would put you at about $75,000 per acre. And, and the interesting thing to note in terms of cost is that the Park and Recreation Department, we, we have no maintenance budget. We don't spend anything to maintain the parks, it's all done by Public Works. We're not a park district, and so much of the, the recommendations are going to be for funds that are going to go to Public Works that will maintain the, the parks, because that's their job. Our budget mostly goes towards recreational programs, which is why I want to distinguish between the recreation side of what we do and the park side of what we do.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And, and thank you, and I'll close out here again, I think another reason highlighting why our parks should be separated out. The difference also, I don't know if this was mentioned earlier, but Skokie has a park district, a lot of these other communities that were named have their own park districts, we don't. Again, to me, highlighting the need for an enterprise fund, so we have that, that accounting of what we're spending in Public Works and other departments to truly understand the full cost of the, the system. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ravel.
So you've mentioned a couple of times that Evanston is lagging in terms of cost, the amount we spend per acre of park?
Yes.
So was that done with a comparison of how many acres of parkland these various communities have? Because Evanston has just a really big amount of parkland.
Consultants did a per acre calculation, so it's amount of money.
Right, I understand that, but I mean, if, if, if Skokie has fewer acres of parkland than we do, then it's not a very fair comparison. That's, that's all my point.
Well, I, I would beg to differ with you, but.
If, if you.
If, if they have a.
If they.
They probably have a lower budget. In fact, I know the Skokie Park District has a lesser budget, the Village, the Oak Park Park District has a lower budget, and certainly lower populations than does the City of Evanston. And so for the City of Evanston to only be paying $31,000 per acre certainly puts us well behind the eight ball in comparison to these.
Right, but unless we really have way more acreage than they do, that's, that's my point.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Ravel. Would anybody like to speak for a first time? If not, we'll move to a second time. Councilmember Sufferden?
Yeah, picking up on what Eleanor said, I mean, the spend per acre, that's like a consultant metric, or?
Yes.
Okay. Is spend per resident maybe a more relevant? Because a cynical person was, and I'm not advocating this, a cynical person could say, well, we have too many acres then, and that doesn't serve the residents well. Is, is cost per resident, is there a reason why that? And I, this may not be a question that you're in a position to answer, but is cost per resident a more relevant measure?
I think the, the greater the denominator, the, the less direct it is to the issue. So I think if you're, if you're comparing per acre, that's probably a better comparison, one community to the next. I don't want you to get lost in the comparisons necessarily, what's important is to understand that the parks in this community have not been invested in appropriately over the course of the last 26 years.
We're in agreement on that. You don't have to convince me of that, I.
Good, and, and so the rest of it is just a way of, of providing additional support for why it's time to start making those investments before the parks, you know, I started this with four of the pillars for a great place to live and a great place to stay. Good schools, good parks, good retail and commerce, and good government. If, if, and you all control two of those, good parks, good government. If we, if we don't have good parks, then one of those columns, one of those stalwarts of why people come to Evanston and stay in Evanston falls away, and that would be, that would be a shame. As I said at the beginning, I've lived here for 40-plus years, and, and for there to be 26 years of uninvestment, I won't say disinvestment, uninvestment in a number of parks, and almost as long in, in probably as many after that. As I said, to call them legacy parks is a misnomer, they're disappointed parks, they are under-invested parks. The time is, the, the time to do something was a decade ago, the time to do something is now, because we can't go back and change, change history.
Thank you.
And I guess my, my other question is, Edgar, I know you kind of just came in the room, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but since we are having this discussion and we're talking about how the Parks and Recreation Department handles one piece of this and your department handles the other, what do you need? Do you need more people? Do you need more equipment? I assume you need more money, but like, where would you allocate that? Is, is our park maintenance deficit a result of lack of personnel, lack of equipment? Is there another factor? What, what do you need to do this better?
Good evening, Councilmembers, Cliff Mendoza, City Manager, Stowe, Edgar Kano, Public Works Agency Director. To your point, Councilmember Sufferden, yes, I mean, we could definitely use a bigger budget, that budget would go to additional staff. Right now, there are two vacancies within the Greenways Department, however, even if we were fully staffed, we can barely get through the amount of acreage that we have now, amount of sports associations that we're supporting, so addition, hiring additional staff, making sure that they have the right equipment, and making sure they, they're provided the, the right training would definitely go a long way. We would have to sit down, work with Parks and Rec to see exactly where those priorities would be as far as maintenance goes, but additional funding would definitely help.
Okay, and I think, and again, like, if acreage is the appropriate metric for measuring against other areas and that, but you know, if you, if you look at our larger parks like Lovelace or James, like, the, there's a, a lot of acreage, but the programming happens in a smaller part of the park than the total acreage. So like, every acre of park doesn't require the same level of maintenance, you know, like, using Robert Crown as an example, like, an ice rink is a much more specialized thing, or a differently specialized thing than a turf field and a basketball court. I mean, there's a lot of different aspects to our parks. Is there a way to figure out, I mean, and, you know, you, your department handles things like emptying garbage, and, you know, no matter how empty garbage cans are on Friday, by Monday on a long weekend, they're going to be full. That's just like a fact. Like, are there efficiencies that can be gained through doing things differently that you foresee, or do you think it's just a matter of more bodies?
I think we can work on efficiencies as well, but in order to, to, to fully tackle the problem, we are going to need more bodies. I think we can priori, once we have those bodies, we can prioritize better, knowing that we do have associations that count on us and rely on us to have fields open at certain times, so we can make sure that we are addressing and making sure that those assets and the equipment and the staff are going towards those. So we can definitely look at efficiency, but the bodies would be.
Is there coordination on things like, if the picnic shelter at Lovelace is rented throughout the weekend, your department knows that that means those garbage cans need to be emptied? I mean, are we, are we siloed, or are we coordinating between departments?
We are coordinating between departments, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, they send us reports of everything that's going on in the park so that we can better prepare not only our Greenways Department, but as well as our refuse and forestry to make sure that we're accommodating the program that they are.
So with that information, it's your department's responsibility to assess the appropriate dispatching of personnel and equipment?
Yes, and we also communicate, so not, we don't just go off the report, we'll definitely communicate with each other, picking up the phone and saying, what do, what do you foresee, what are we expecting for this weekend? We can read something on there, but it's that day-to-day daily communication to make sure that we're prepared for the event that does occur.
Thank you, Councilmember Sufferden, those are great questions, but I have to.
I'm all about fast meanings.
Councilmember Burns for the first time?
The, the wait times for, and this, this is a question for Director Kano, the wait times that we experience to replace equipment, is that a result of the supply chain issues that we saw during the pandemic and that remain an issue, or is, is there something else going on?
Supply chain issues is definitely a thing, I mean, budgeting is also, but you're saying once we actually order the part, getting it?
Yeah, because I think every example I can think of, of play equipment that needed to be replaced in the fifth ward, there seems to be quite a bit of lag or wait time where we're just waiting for the, the components to be delivered. And so I didn't know if that was only a result of the supply chain issues that we saw during, during the pandemic, or if it's something else going on.
As far as we know, it is supply chain issues, and it's not just happening with playgrounds, I mean, it's happening with our waste receptacles, it's happening with our equipment, we've been waiting years, so that definitely plays a big part. I can talk with staff, see if they have any other reason to believe it's anything else.
For playground equipment parts especially, most of our playground equipment is so old that those models and manufactured, are no longer manufactured, and so then it's a custom order, it's a research to see if there's anything else that will work before we can, so if it's a slide that breaks, it often takes a really long time to get it back in stock or to get that order here.
And I was also told that we don't have that many tot lots in the community, and I didn't, that hasn't been my experience, so I just, just quickly, I have some other questions, but just wanted to double check that. I see them all over the place, but is that an issue that we don't have enough tot lots at our, at our parks?
I haven't specifically heard that criticism before, we do have a number of tot lots, so we're in the. So we're in the process of doing a strategic master plan for our parks and natural areas. And that's something I can pose to our consultants to see if they have a standard or metric they can supply on that.
Point of, just to get clarity to your question. Mr. Callahan, this is something we recently discussed, and it wasn't that we don't have enough tot lots. Can you provide some clarity on that?
Michael Callahan, Assistant Director, Parks and Rec. Yes, so what we're dealing with in some of these tot lots and some of these parks is that the, the equipment is so antiquated and so, it's just not age appropriate anymore. They've kind of dated themselves. And we just had a meeting the other day where a community member told us that the neighborhood doesn't go to the tot lot because it doesn't meet their needs. They'd rather go to the different park, to a different park with newer, more updated equipment. That's a little bit more satisfactory. Our playgrounds are specifically aged from two years to five years of age for children, or five years to 12 years. We do not have any playground equipment in any of our parks for six months to 24 months, or for 13 years and older. So we have been replacing like with like, and we have not been necessarily looking to see if the assets are put in the appropriate locations even. So if your park currently has a playground, it gets replaced with another playground, where we have not been necessarily looking at if that's the most appropriate place. We also have certain places in town where we may have three playgrounds within a five-minute walk of each other, whereas in other parts in town, they may be spread out far more by distance. So we need to do a little bit better job in looking at what we have and what we're providing.
Do we know what percentage of our parks have play equipment or playsets? And if we don't know that now, I can?
We have 52 playgrounds. That's both two to five and five to 12, so I'm not sure exactly what the, what the number of parks are.
Okay. And I recall reading somewhere earlier in the term that one of the goals was to have parks in a certain proximity from where people live. I can't remember what the distance was. It was a, I think it was a Parks and Rec goal. Am I remembering that correctly? Do we have any goals based around where people live and where the nearest park is to them?
Ten-minute walk is typically an industry standard that we want to park within a ten-minute walk, and most of Evanston does have that. But what needs to be looked at is not just the walk, does the park have the proper amenities for the neighborhood? That is, that's just as important, if not more so, because you may have a park in your neighborhood, but it may not be able to meet your needs.
So have we mapped it out to know whether or not we're like over exceeding that goal? And that, do we find that we have parks in clusters, too many parks with playsets, especially in close proximity to one another?
And that is what the strategic plan is being worked on right now, is looking at some of those specific questions. So hopefully we're.
Do you know when we'll have that information? Because I think that's an important aspect to this discussion about CIP.
I'm not sure what the.
And Councilmember, I was just going to add, I think in previous studies, and Director Thompson, or maybe Laura can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe at one point we had studied the 10-minute walk, and I believe 99% or more of Evanston was within a 10-minute walk.
Yeah, my hunch is that we're probably exceeding it, and that's almost my point, is that if we're not going to have a conversation about reducing the amount of something, play equipment, acres, then whatever the number is, let's just pay for it. Because there's nothing really to talk about unless we're going to, you know, unless we're going to push back on price, on the pricing that, the cost that you're giving us. Unless we're going to question or provide any additional scrutiny to the cost that you're providing us, then I think we just give you what you need unless we're going to scrutinize how many acres, how many, how much play equipment. And to that question, it would be helpful to know where are we in terms of meeting our goals. And again, are there any parks in clusters in certain areas? And is there an opportunity maybe to reduce how many playsets we have in the community and invest more in the ones that remain to provide even better experience for the people living in that area? So I'd be really interested to get some of that data once it's provided.
And Councilmember, I would just add that putting assets to work, Incubator that we just joined, that's going to study this exact thing, and that report's due out in February.
Perfect. Thank you. That's all, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Reed, is your light still on?
Yes. First question for Director Kano and then Mr. Callahan. Hi, Director. Do you know what portion of your budget supports Parks and Rec maintenance, either percentage-wise or dollar amount?
Don't know it exactly off the top of my head, but I believe it's 1.8 to $2 million that goes into Greenways budgeting.
And that would exclusively be to support park maintenance, or does that also include, you know, that section of greenway in front of every property?
No, we do not maintain the parkway typically that's up to the adjacent property owner. So it's to maintain our beaches, it's to maintain our parks.
Okay, thank you. That's it. That's very helpful. And then, Mr. Callahan, I guess this might be for you. So do we, Laura, Chief Engineer Biggs mentioned that some of our models or equipment are so old that you can't get replacement slides. Do we buy, have we tried to buy standardized models of, you know, play equipment across various parks? And then if we know that slides are breaking on a regular basis, just buy a bunch of extra slides and we buy those? And you know, if anyone breaks any park, we can just swap them out?
So we do not have standardized amenities across the park system. So through community engagement, we really ask the public what they desire, and they have a huge say in what is, is put into the parks. So it's, each park, when it gets redone, is kind of semi-customized by the residents and the community members for that area. So there is not necessarily standardization of playground. Now, there are similar playground sets throughout the town, and those are, you know, that is, you know, the mindset, but it doesn't always weigh out that.
Have we thought about, and I don't know if there's someone else, but have we thought about creating, yeah, let's say, two or three options that folks can choose from to standardize across the city so we can more efficiently replace equipment?
That has been a discussion that we've had, is coming up with three different options and presenting that and then going that route so that, for the reasons that you just listed.
Okay. I would advise us to really move forward on that so we can, you know, get things back in order quickly and save some money. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Really appreciate that. That was a helpful discussion. And I think one of the items that we're ultimately looking for is that regular line item, that budget line item to maintain our parks every year so that they're beautiful, all the parks are baseball diamonds. Every year, they're beautiful, so we don't, as Chair Bush pointed out, we don't wait 10 years. Then we consider, you know, leveraging potentially a bond in order to keep our, get our parks up to speed. Thank you very much. Okay, so next, moving on to public comment. Great.
Just email public comment. I'm going to quickly mention Paul Toraselli and Michael Yardley in support of the Northwestern Stadium, and then we'll move over to.
Okay, so first in person, we have Junad Riske. Welcome back, Mr. Riske.
Junad Riske, I haven't been here in a while, but I've been, I'm a 40-year resident here. My children went to the public schools, actually with Fatherman Burns in Ovington, a long time ago. Anyway, tonight I was asked to sort of come here by someone on the council. And I wanted to, I'm going to just recast something I talked about quite a few years ago, and that was the water department, how the water system's run here. Every, you know, I'm sorry, I killed this. We have the largest, second-largest water department in the state of Illinois. Basically, there are more customers served by the water department than are non-residents in other cities than Evanston. So the water department really is run really for the benefit of a lot of other people, several hundred thousand people, I believe, are users. There are multiple contracts here with these users, and basically, these contracts are for capital and operating expenses. Some years ago, I sat in a room with Mr. Stonebeck, Mr. Bob Kowitz, and several activists from the fifth ward, and we discussed how the water department was run and run as a business. And what I mean business, I'm not talking about I want to sell the water department, like we want to sell, you know, the place on the lake or anything like that. I want it run in a way that we know what's going on. And that means that we know what it really costs to run this with each customer that's involved with it. Because are Evanston residents paying more than they should? Are Evanston paying, you know, maybe we have a good deal, maybe we don't. And at one point, we were looking to get other customers, but because we don't know how this business really operates, you don't really know. You're worried about a kitchen at the Levy Center. Well, that's peanuts compared to what's going on there. And you know, you ask for increases in the water rate, but you don't know really what's going on. I guarantee you, if you ask him how the Evanston customer pays in relation to the Skokie customer or the customer from the Northwest Water Commission, they're not the same because they're under different contracts. But the real question is, when we pay for a capital expense, how's it, how is it being paid? And same with the operating. Are we getting a fair shake as Evanston residents? Maybe we should be paying nothing for our water as Evanston residents, or we might be have to pay more because of mistakes and the bad contracts. We don't know. And then the other thing that's going on here, the city takes money out of the water department, and it's been doing this for years. I heard four million now is what they take. It used to be two, I think, when I was around. So that's a problem. Really, what's going on, nobody really has a handle on this. And what I would recommend is you get, I doubt you have the ability internally to get this organized financially. What you have in your documents, your accounting documents, doesn't show you anything. You need to bring in someone to organize it, a consultant or somebody to look at this, and so you can make good decisions with our money. That's the whole issue here. You know, and what you'll be told is, oh, we pay lower rates than most of the other communities. Well, it's the same thing. You talk about the acreage of the parks. Well, it's meaningless. It doesn't really matter. It's really what, you know, we, like I say, we are selling so much water, we could be, should be paying zero possibly. I could say that, but I can't say that for a fact, and nobody really can until it's looked at and understood. And you know, and I don't know that I can blame the people that run it because the council has to force the change. The council has to say, we want change to make this, we need this done differently. So I mean, and you know, what happens? You come, when you ask for, I'm going to increase the rates, you need to know really why. What do the other people? So I guess I'm running out of time here. Is that?
That's the time, if you'd like to wrap up.
All right. So anyway, like I said, many years ago, like I said, I've been involved with many things here. And I would say with the schools, the city and everything, there's not, there's, we probably waste a lot of money because we don't manage well. I would say about 10% of the money is probably lost. So it's bad, and the people in charge have to take accountability.
Thank you very much. Next, Jack Martell.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Kelly and esteemed councilmembers. I sent out an email about 11th hour with a bunch of material I'm going to cover here. I'd love if I could use this cool stuff and not be limited to three minutes. I'm the president of the pension board. It's a huge fund, serves 260 people. My name is Jack Martell, Evanston resident, closing in on 70 years, homeowner closing in on 45 years, retired captain from the fire department. First, I'd like to thank you for passing 100% yearly funding of public safety pensions, leading to the public safety pensions being fully funded by 2040. And I came, the heading of this, you'll see, I sent, is good news. I'm bringing good news tonight. I sent four attachments. The first attachment is a three-year City of Evanston budget surplus, which outlines the surprising City of Evanston budget surplus for the last three years totaling 128.9 million in a GAAP basis, or 123.6 million on a cash basis. These figures come straight out of the ordinance memorandums found on the City of Evanston website. These aren't my numbers, these are Hattish's, what he sends out to everyone. So we, we know how to do things efficiently and save money. The second attachment is the City of Evanston cash and investment outline. And this is an interesting document that I used to have. Come back here. And this is, you can find this on the budget page. You got to search a little bit. It's also, it looks like this. I'd love to be able to flash this up on the board so you guys can see this. I'm just sending emails. Is, back in early in 2021, our total cash and investments was 79.4 million. Currently, we're at a high watermark, 149.2 million. We've never had that much. And the only comment I'll see is when you look at the cash, you see where our cash is, you see where our investments are, it looks like the cash is at all in one bank. I'd say maybe that's not the smartest idea, but still good news, still good news. The third thing I have is that what I really have here for the effect of the 100% funding, we, there hasn't been a council meeting since we got the actuarial, so I was able to work the numbers. And normally, because we were only paying 90%, the pension fund would ramp up. The debt was ramping up like 9.5 million a year average. Once we started the 100% funding, that dropped off. We're not losing anything anymore. But in this one year, the balance of the both funds of what is owed went down by 17.2 million. That's a total of full funding, the first year, 26.6 million that our actuarial has dropped off. This is 26.6 million, city taxpayers are not going to have to come up with. And they have a, I also include, this is all on your emails. This is on your, you'll see how it runs down right here. I know I've been called off here.
That's, do you have more I can?
I just have a really, just have a very quick thing. I did take a good look at the audit, and I see it's fallen something I don't ever see in the budget. You know, we have an IMRF pension fund, and I misled you. I've said often, boy, that's funded 100%. It's funded 119%. This fund, it's got 53.7 million dollars more that is needed to be funded at 100%. Remarkable. But that, I'm not saying that because it's wrong, that shows you the power of a 100% funded pension. When times are good, that thing roars. This is right off of the, straight out of the budget, excuse me, the audit. That's incredibly good news. That's for our taxpayers. And that, and that the other budgets are, excuse me, that the public safety pensions are headed toward 100%, that's really good news. And thank you so much for doing that. And I'm telling that not only as the president of the pension board, but as a longtime taxpayer. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Martell. Next, Mary Rosinski.
Good evening. Hi, everybody. I'm actually here to discourage you guys from passing bonds. I think we need to look at our budgets and our surpluses and really get our finances in order. I'm so glad to hear what Mr. Martell said, so maybe we'll have some extra money to take care of our Parks and Rec. In '21 and '22, we had a lot of surplus budgets, and the Budget and Finance Committee is doing a fabulous, fabulous job of highlighting where we need to spend money and where we don't. They were talked last August, or last November, October, rather, that please don't be issuing bonds for 2023 because we don't need to. We had a $30 million budget surplus in '22, and then in '23, we had a $50 million surplus. And the projects that we had coming out of '22 could be funded with cash. And I believe it was Mr. Livingston who was saying, use our cash, don't go into more debt. We need to reduce our cash that we, above our surplus, above our reserves, and we need to reduce our debt. So I mean, I'm looking at the August 11th, 2022 roundtable, which says 12.5 million money is covered from our surpluses back then. So then I look at the memo today asking to pass 12.5 million for projects that were done in '22 and '23. But if you didn't need to borrow it, don't borrow it. And let's get our budget and our economy in Evanston level so that we can spend the money and prioritize our needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, we go to, oh, Mr. Ray Freeman, next.
Good evening, everyone. Hope you all had a great summer so far, end of summer. I want to first say thanks to Janodaritzki and Mary Rosinsky and Jack Martel. I agree with everything they said. I'm very concerned and surprised to be, I'm talking for seven, eight years about the budget and about general obligation bonds, which seem to be out of hand, and they seem to be used every single council meeting. We are using general obligation bonds, don't know why. We have a finance and budget committee, which is great, a new committee, wondering what the analysis is from the Budget and Finance Committee. I don't understand why we keep on talking about spending money that we don't have. General obligations now, general obligation bonds right now, about 200 million, debt service on those bonds, about 15 million per year, or about 1.2 million per month, just in debt service payment for those general obligation bonds, and you're talking about taking out more. In our budget for '21 was 296 million, for 2022, our budget was 360 million, this year it's 402 million, okay? We have increased in three years 25% or we've increased our budget by $100 million, but we need more money. Well, I don't get it. You know, as Jack Martel said, as he digs into the budget, he's finding money. A few months ago, we found $15 million excess laying around, and then it was 30 million, and then I think it was 54 million, but I read in Evanston now that, well, if we did all the projects that, you know, that you all want to do, we're still short money. So, why can't we get our ducks in a row to spend the money that we actually have without consistently going into debt constantly? We need transparency and accountability, as the mayor said when he took office, and it's, it just, it doesn't make sense to me to keep on spending and spending and spending. How many employees do we need? 850, 900 employees? Sorry, lost my place. How much money do we need to spend? How much money do we need to, you know, to bring in? It just, we need to get our ducks in a row. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We now go to public comment online, starting with Albert Ferguson.
Thank you. So, I have to backtrack to what I believe it was Mr. Bush made, who started off his remarks with, you know, it's, the parks are an emergency. You know, there's children being carried out of the parks on stretchers, going to ambulances because there's so many injuries. I'd like to see the record of injuries that he's claiming, because what, a real emergency is what's happening with the forest fires on the West Coast and Canada and Maui, flooding on all coasts, melting ice caps, children being shot in schools, those are emergencies. Parks did the work, I understand parks did work, but let's not be stupid about it and use exaggerated rhetoric to inflame the issue. Regarding Robert Crown, the Friends of Robert Crown were supposed to provide an annual maintenance fund, that was one of their chores that they failed amongst other things. To go back to my prepared comments, where is the document that was requested several times that I know of, from the finance and budget meetings, that provides a piece of paper showing all the funds and the surplus for all the funds, over and above the reserves, and not the reserves, but the surplus? Seems to me you need that document because there are, as others have said, tens of millions of dollars of surplus money that can go towards some of these things without having to open new geo-bonds. It doesn't appear to me that the geo-bonds for 2024 that are being requested for the water projects are needed. Wilmette, they have a 10-year plan, they actually plan ahead for how they spend money. Their funding sources include the IEPA, ARPA funds, I don't think we use any of our ARPA funds for anything but special political projects, and they used waterfront operations, you know, gain from water rates and wholesale water revenue. We should be charging more to pay for these projects through our wholesale water revenue. And at the end of the recent Finance and Budget Committee, neither Laura Biggs nor Hitesh could adequately explain Evanston's spiraling debt that's been occurring over the last 10 years. I just found it surprising that they kind of passed it back and forth between them, and it didn't make sense what they were saying, which is...
Mr. Vasilko, if you could wrap it up, please.
Sure. As far as the parks presentation goes, you know, again, there are other real emergencies in life, we should properly take care of our parks over a period of time, not, and we should plan for it, not just come to the council and say, you want $20 million in one fell swoop. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is Albert Ferguson? No, okay, next, Meg Welch.
Hello, council members, I'm a fourth board homeowner, and there's been some interesting framing of financial issues facing the city and budget items that's piqued my curiosity, and I hope council members, they piqued your curiosity too. Regarding SP1, the Capital Improvement Program funding, why is bond issuance our first go-to for revenue? This is a repeated phenomena in the city. It appears the city may have a bond addiction. And why was our future financial situation framed recently as an emergency, when we have surpluses larger than our projected future deficit? It could even make one wonder if the public is being softened up to accept certain votes by the council, because it is so unusual to hear alarm bells coming from elected, an elected official about our future financial obligations. Bonds are future financial obligations, so please consider getting a full accounting of surpluses and reserves and belt tightening before issuing bonds. We do appreciate when you take a deep dive into the issues, just like you just did with the parks and recreation, councilmen suffered and others, unpacking, getting down to the nitty-gritty, we really need you to do this before you approve issuing bonds. What is the concern about the appropriate balance of the water fund? Again, why is this a problem? There are federal funds coming for the removal of the lead pipes, and again, as other people have said, what is the revenue from our supplying water to the other suburbs? So, thank you when you take a deep dive into these kinds of issues before incurring more debt or raising water rates. Please remember that debt is an equity issue, because constantly rising taxes to pay bond obligations do push some residents out of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that's our last public comment. All right, we now move to communications from our city clerk. Next, we have SP1, would somebody like to move SP1?
I'll move item SP1 for discussion, this is the Capital Improvement Program funding.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Newsman, seconded by Councilmember Harris. Okay, so, let's see, do we have a... Okay, I think Ms. Biggs is going to give us a presentation on SP1, or, no?
Is that attached?
Our CFO, Mr. Desai, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and the council. SP1 is about the funding, the other, the following, some of the items are about the CIP, so if you want, you can talk about the project details first, and then I can go last to talk about the funding, it's up to the mayor and the city council.
It seems to me if we did all the CIP together, right?
Just for discussion anyway, so, we're not going to be voting on anything, I think we're just offering general guidance, I'd be happy sticking with this order.
Okay.
Just, Mayor Protem, it's just a primary question, how different is the information that will be provided tonight than what we received at Finance and Budget? And I know everybody doesn't sit on the Finance and Budget Committee, but I just want to focus my...
Right. I mean, in terms of the bond environment, it's the same, the line of credit environment, it is the same, the amount is pretty much the same that what is the requirement for the past two years where we haven't issued the bonds for '22 and '23. So, yes, pretty much the same, nothing major change in any interest rate environment and in bond market, and again, yes, the rate is hovering right around 410, 424.2 for the geo-bonds if we decide. If you look at the memo, we have explained what are the projects and reimbursement resolutions approved by the city council for the two years of '21, '22, and '23, and based on the kind of conversation with the engineering team and others, it looks like for the '22 and '23, if we continue to spend the money, you know, they have already started a few projects in their several different phases, you know, all those projects, we may need around $25 million for the funding. Now, at the Finance and Budget Committee, those who are not there, there was an option discussed that, okay, we can tap into the line of credit for a temporary until the bond market gets better. And the general consensus at the Finance Budget Committee was that, okay, can we wait maybe a six month, until the spring next year, and see whether the rates go down in the bond market? And I said, yes, we surely could do that, that is one of the options. Hopefully, it goes in the right direction, that after six months, the rates have gone down at least by 50, 75 basis points, which kind of generates a substantial thing. We have a line of credit with the Byline Bank in the amount of $15 million. They are charging 120 basis points plus the 30-day SOFR rate, as of today, it is 6.52. So, the other thing, just to kind of bring you in perspective, is the cash flow situation, the property tax second installment has been delayed, so obviously, again, right now, we expect that they will bill around November 1st, Cook County, and we would start getting the money sometime in November end, and so that's the cash flow thing. But, yes, I am at least right now comfortable unless something, emergency comes up in this other areas, and I get the kind of notification from Laura about the payment, we can, yeah, tap into the line of credit for now, and hoping that, yeah, come the March, April of the next year, we can go and issue the bonds.
Thank you. Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. Just a few clarifying questions based on stuff we received in the public comment. One, we haven't issued new bonds since 2021, is that correct?
Yes.
And I can swear we've had council meetings since then, I'd heard that we, at every council meeting, we're passing bonds. We haven't, in fact, done that since 2021, and as a result, the council has rolled off about $23 million in debt?
Right, so, December 1st to, oh, yeah, around 10 to 11 million every year, and this December in '23, we would have, so total is around 34 million for three years.
Even more, yes. Okay, I wanted to get that clear for myself and for the public. And then it was mentioned that funds are taken out of the water fund. Have we declared a surplus in our water fund and transferred water fund monies over to our general fund or some other fund?
I mean, these are the administrative transfers, as well as the, one of the big transfers is because of the general fund paid for, I think Dave Stonebeck can talk about 50 years back what we decided to do.
Good evening, Dave Stoneback, Deputy City Manager. We actually had a consultant work with us to determine what would be an appropriate transfer from the water fund to the general fund for the services provided by the general fund, such as HR, IT, police, fire, and all that. And what we are transferring, I think, is right around $4 million, maybe a little bit more, was a number that was identified by that consultant as a rightful transfer from the waterfront to the general fund for the services provided by the general fund.
Which is a good thing, because it's saving us on, I mean, we've raised, in 2021, the council raised property taxes to fill about a $500,000 shortfall, is that correct?
I don't recall, I don't think we had a property tax increase.
Before this council, right before this council took office, I believe there was an increase in the property tax levy.
Yes, that, before, yes.
Yes, that's what I meant by 2021, maybe it was the 20, whatever, 20 when it actually was passed, but, so that was the last time, and it was about for $500,000 roughly?
Yeah, I'll have to check, but yes, you're right, there are no property tax increases in the last two years, so...
And my point being is, you know, transferring $4 million a year, we've increased property taxes for less than that, so this is a thing that means that our enterprise fund, our water enterprise fund, is actually paying dividends back to the taxpayers of Evanston, allowing us to recuperate some funds, so I think that is a positive thing. And then, this is a question for you, moving on to another topic, what is the current bond interest rate?
4.2, based on a couple of weeks back when financial advisor provided...
And then, what is our interest rate for the line of credit?
It would be as of now, 6.52, obviously, it's a variable rate, if the SOFR rate changes, it would change.
So, then, why would we, can you help me understand why we would tap into our line of credit at this moment before tapping into bonds?
I mean, there are two schools of thought. One is that, okay, if we continue and issue the bonds right now, you are kind of locked in for 20 years. Obviously, the bonds are callable after 10 years, so I can refinance, hoping that, okay, rates would come back to normal, 2, 2.5%. Why would you lock in yourself for 4.2 for 20 years? Versus line of credit, yes, you pay the interest on the amount you use, when you use. Versus geo-bond, I issued the bond tomorrow, I start paying interest on everything, even though my cash flow, the way the projects were, the money could go out six months, 12 months, 18, 24 months. So, that is the big thing. The only downside of using line of credit to fund the CIP projects and that to, on a long term, it's not a long-term solution, line of credit, it's a temporary. Like, suppose property tax money is not coming, but I know it would come in three months, for sure, that's the best use of it, for a temporary credit relief. What if the rates don't improve or don't go in the right direction, after even six months, eight months? Suppose we start using line of credit now, we pay 6.5% come March, April, May, and we are still hovering around 4%, and that's when it's a big concern.
And, okay, that's helpful, I don't, have we done modeling to determine, because I think what I'm hearing is that there is a, I think we've done a, this council has done a wonderful job at holding the line on property taxes for the last three years, going on four years, we have not issued bonds since 2021, and so we've held the line for quite some time, and I think that has allowed us to let the Finance and Budget Committee really start to dig into things, but at some point, we're getting the data back, and we're seeing, all right, so there really are these huge liabilities out there that we haven't paid for, so at some point, you got to start actually taking care of the problem, or you're being just as, you know, you're, you know, being just as irresponsible as, you know, if we weren't... weren't putting up the funding for it. So now we've done, this council has done that hard work, and so I do think, you know, it's worth us considering issuing new bonds for this year to cover CIP. Then there are other things that will come up from proposals from other folks that I think are interesting uses of bond funds. But I don't think we can permanently push off issuing new bonds, although we've, I think, done a good job for the last three years. I'll hold there.
Thank you. Councilmember Newsman?
Thank you. For those of us, or those of us in this room who were not at the finance and budget committee meeting last week, I'll kind of summarize my takeaways, and I confirmed this earlier this afternoon in a discussion with David Livingston, who chairs that committee. And so what I'm reporting is, you know, my understanding of the general consensus of the finance and budget committee meeting last week. And to Councilmember Reed's point, at some point, we're going to have to pay for stuff. And we have been planning all along to utilize bonds to pay for capital improvement projects for which bonds have not yet been issued. So the question is not if we should issue bonds. Yes, we do need to issue bonds. The question is when. And the consensus of the committee last week was not quite yet. Let's wait until maybe the first quarter of 2024. At that point, we will know how we ended up the 2023 fiscal year, we'll have an actual budget for 2024. We might, at that point, have at least some idea of where some other major financial commitments or major issues that have financial implications, what direction those might be heading by that time. So, you know, long story short, let's hold off on issuing bonds, but when we do, let's try and stick to the trend that we've established over the last few years and not issue more debt than we retire. And so I'll push back on the perception that we are spiraling into more debt. It's actually the opposite. We have issued no more new debt over the last three years. We've actually retired $30 million of debt. That's heading in the right direction. And we do a little bit of that every year, go into less debt than we pay off, you know, eventually we'll end up where we need to be. Another point I want to make is if we look at our capital plan, and we'll get into this a little bit later this evening, it's only a portion of our capital improvement plan is looking to bonds to fund it. It's not the first place we look, it's probably the last place we look. So I just want to make that point. And I have some additional comments on the water department, I'll save those for the next agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to comment, unless somebody else would like to comment. And I think it's really important, we're not just going to issue bonds to issue bonds. I mean, what we don't want to do is subsidize and, you know, a larger-than-necessary cash position, a bloated balance sheet. So I think this is very important. We do have an exceptionally large debt, outstanding debt in Evanston, so this is wonderful that for the past two years, this council has brought that debt down. So I think we really do need to analyze it carefully, analyze our expenses, you know, in a comprehensive context along about what's needed in terms of maintenance. I'd like to see us, you know, putting those important issues, whether it's 20 million or whatever it is, in a regular line item so that we're budgeting for that as opposed to bonding out. I think, you know, we're already hearing from our finance department that it looks like the general fund is going to end up with a $30 million surplus. And if we're talking about 20 million or 25 million in bonding, let's be careful how we do this. No one's saying not to spend where we need to spend, but we certainly shouldn't just add to unnecessarily to a, like I say, to a larger-than-necessary cash position that I think Mr. Mortel this evening pointed out where we're at and how that's grown. So we don't issue bonds just to issue bonds because we haven't in two years. This is the good news, that we're reducing that debt, that's less money that we're forcing our residents to pay in finance. I mean, that goes nowhere, right? We don't want to just throw money at finance. So I ask that we, so I think that's what's really important, that we're, that we look at if there are surplus funds available, and that's above and beyond the reserve, then we consider that first and foremost before we leverage 20 years of debt. And I think, Councilmember Reed, your question about the short term, again, if we're waiting for property taxes because those are delayed, then of course, making up that amount of money, if we have to borrow, should be a short term as opposed to 20 years because we're behind by two months waiting for our property taxes. Okay, Councilmember Burns?
I think it's important, as we continue to discuss our CIP and general budget, to weigh that against, weigh that against our city council goals and priorities. And to that end, I know we were trying to schedule another session. Manager Stowe, do you know when our next gathering will be? The doodle pole, okay. Well, I'll use this opportunity then to say, look in your emails and fill out the doodle as quickly as you can. That's to my colleagues, because I would like to, I think that's really important. I don't think this council has had goals, we're using goals from the previous council, which, you know, aligns closely, but I think we need to hopefully finish that up before we pass our next budget. And that's all. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Desai. Okay, next we move to...
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Reed.
And Mr. Desai, can you... Can you, I just want stated, you know, publicly, a few numbers. So what is the total CIP ask for this year?
The total CIP budget is bigger, but what we are asking for the 22 and 23 projects is a $25 million bond fund.
No, just, what is the CIP ask for 2024?
Or they're still working on, right?
The total CIP is currently proposed at 111, although that is more than we could execute with current staff and resources.
Okay, and then what is the number that we could execute, do you think?
That is somewhat complicated to answer, because it depends a little bit on where the money is, what type of CIP we're talking about. There's different types of infrastructure, and our capacity to execute projects on streets and transportation is different than for parks.
Okay, and then, so it's 111 million as they ask, maybe 70, 80 million is what's possible, let's just say. And what, are there any new streams of revenue that we're asking for to help cover this cost other than, you know, bonds?
No, that's something that I have made some presentations to the parks, or to the finance and budget committee, and I think that's something that they have started to consider, but that hasn't been determined yet.
Can you name maybe some streams of revenue that you think would be advisable or novel or feasible, you know, whatever words you want to use to describe it for us to consider?
I would prefer not to at this time.
Okay, no worries. New revenue is scary to ask for, but I think, you know, when we're looking at these huge liabilities, and let's just say the number is, you know, 75, 80 million, what did we spend on CIP in 2023?
We budgeted approximately $90 million. We have not spent that. Projects get delayed for a variety of reasons. Often, it has to do with some of our outside funding sources not being made available as quickly as we would like. Sometimes it's staffing, sometimes it's that we're waiting for an MWRD permit or something miscellaneous like that. But I would guess that we ended up spending around 60 million.
Okay, and wrapping up here with a few questions, but what... Is our CIP completely within our general fund, or is it... Or, I mean, I know that some of it is TIF, and, but where does it primarily live?
The largest projects come out of the water plant, which are funded by the water fund. The, otherwise, quite a lot of it is within the general fund.
So I guess the reason I ask that, since we allocated 90 million last year and only spent about, there's 30 million sitting around, or roughly will be, is that accounted for in our surplus for, or is this money that...
No, it's money that, a lot of that money did not come in. A lot of, we get a lot of money through outside grants, honestly. And so I would say, no, it is not accounted for in our surplus. In some cases, things, there is some stuff like motor fuel tax where it does accumulate, but then we just turn around and make a higher request next year to make up the difference. So most of the funds that are not general obligation bonds are so limited in what they can spend on, that it's unusual for large amounts of money to be accumulating different places.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you both. Okay, we'll now move to item SP2. Would somebody like to move SP2?
I'll move item SP2, Water Fund Updates, for discussion.
I'll second.
Okay, SP2 has been moved and seconded. Good evening, good evening, Mr. King.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Kelly, members of the city council, City Manager Stowe, Darryl King, Water Production Bureau Chief. And tonight, I'm here to discuss, I'll give you a water fund update. And so, as staff, since 2009, staff has been utilizing a cost-of-service model, which helps us manage the activities within the water fund, revenues, expenses, CIPs, you know, everything that we do in the water fund. And what has happened is because of, and our current goals right now, we like to maintain a $4 million cash reserve in the water fund, and that was something that was recommended back in 2009 from a financial consultant with the study that was done. There's a link to that study in the memo. And actually, we're gonna, we're gonna recommend that we revise some of those goals, but for now, $4 million cash reserve in the water fund, 1.5 miles of water main we replace each year, so that's another one. We want to also keep the percent debt service to revenue around, you know, less than 25%. And feels like I'm missing one. I'll think of it, but I'll continue. And so there are several factors that are, that's causing issues with the water fund, that's putting the water fund in financial trouble. And those issues are the cost of water main and lead service lines replacements that must be borne by the Evanston retail customers, and I'll talk more about that, the need to replace aging water mains, the need to replace lead service lines as part of water main projects, the need to replace all 11,000-plus lead service lines between 2027 and 2047, and that's as a result of the Lead Service Line Replacement and Notification Act that was enacted January 1 of 2022, and increased construction costs for water main. And so our distribution system consists of 156 miles of water main, and 99% of those water mains are 18 inches in diameter or smaller, and serve only Evanston retail customers. The life expectancy of water main is 100 to 120 years, and the cost of replacing this infrastructure must be borne by the Evanston retail customers and cannot be charged to our wholesale water customers. We do have contracts with municipalities outside of Evanston, and they do share in costs that the water utility projects that we undertake, but not for water mains. Projects that happen at the water plant, the intake project, the Clearwell project we did recently, they share in those, but not for the water mains that the Evanston retail customers utilize solely. And so this image is a map of our distribution system, and in red, that's water mains that are greater than 100 years old, and that's like 50 miles of water main of that 156. And then the orange represents water mains that are 80 to 100 years old, and that represents 32 miles of water main. So this really gives you a good idea of the age of our distribution system. And so what staff did is, this table represents the miles of pipe in each age category. So we, you know, we broke the columns down, 60 years and younger, all the way out to 121 years and older, and we came up with various scenarios. So in 2022, we had 1.1 miles of water main that's 121 years and older. And so we just looked at the different scenarios looking out to 2042, so 20 years from 2022. And if the city council said, hey, we're not doing any more annual replacements for 20 years, in 2042, there would be 50.7 miles of that 121 or older water main. Currently, we do 1.5 miles, and in 2042, there would be 26.7 miles. If we, if we went to 2 miles, it would be 18.7 miles. 3.2 miles, we're at 0, and then 4.8 and 5.5 miles. So the more you do, the younger the distribution system will become. And so this table represents the cost of per-annual foot, the cost increases that we're experiencing with water main replacement. The average cost per linear foot prior to the lead service line replacement program, 29 to 2022 was $648 per lineal foot. The average cost since the lead service line replacement program, 2022, that's when the law was enacted, to 2023 is $912 per lineal foot. So we're looking at, you know, a 41% increase, and, you know, that increases, you know, cost of materials, for sure, labor, and, but, but also, the scope of work changed. This, the city council declared lead a public health issue, a public health hazard, and so, and decided to replace the lead service line all the way into the house now. So whereas before, we were replacing the services up to the parkway where the shut-off valve is, and now we go all the way into the building. And so that's increasing the scope, which increases the cost as well. And so this graph represents the water fund currently at our current goals, with, you know, maintaining $4 million in cash, doing 1.5 miles of water main each year, and, you know, with the, with the increased cost to do that work. In 2022 and 2023, the thought was to sell bonds that would be paid by the water fund. And in those two years, that bonding did not occur. So that is playing a role in this as well, and this does not factor in the lead, the total lead service line replacement. the lead, the total lead service line replacement program, which I'll talk more about. So, this is kind of current status quo. This is a, a picture of had, you know, the bonds in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three been sold, and it, it came out, I wanna say like thirteen point three million dollars for that. This is what it would look like. And this was presented to the, the Finance and Budget Committee last week, and they made recommendations to us. One, the, the, the reserve levels like in twenty-three were just really high. And they were high again in, in twenty-four and twenty-five, and, and even twenty-seven out, it, it just starts to decrease again. We were requesting or discussing bonding for twenty twenty-four in the amount of twenty-six point three million, which would be thirteen point three million for what, what we didn't do in twenty-two and twenty-three, plus another thirteen for twenty-four. And that was a concern as well. And so, we, we went back to the, we, we went back, re- recalculated some things. You know, one of the things that's really important is with projects that we do, we request funding from I E P A. And one of the requirements is we have to demonstrate a long-term, healthy water fund when we apply for loans, for instance. And typically, that's a, a five-year, long-term picture is what they, what they look at. And, and so, it's, it's very, it's imperative so that we can continue. And another thing is that grant funding, you know, we hear about grant funding that could be available for lead service line replacements through I E P A. You have to qualify for the loan before loan forgiveness can be considered as well. So, we wanna keep that in mind also. So, we, we, we went back, and this is what we, what we came up with. This is all in everything. So, we, we, we increased the minimum reserves from four to five point eight, and I'll, I'll talk, I'll go more into that here shortly. That's more of a budget policy increase. It's like sixteen point six percent or something for the water fund. So, we just, we went with that amount. This also includes bonding in twenty twenty-four. Instead of twenty-six point three, I wanna say eighteen point one. This includes five hundred lead service line replacements each year. And this also includes increasing the water mains from one and a half miles to three point two miles. And so, this is what we were able to, to develop. And this would demonstrate a healthy wa- water fund projection to, to I E P A. And so, our revised goals, I, I just mentioned the five point eight million. Keep debt service expenses associated with distribution system, less than twenty-five percent. Maintain the water treatment plant in good operating condition. Replace or rehabilitate the three point two miles, and replace approximately five hundred lead service lines beginning in twenty twenty-seven. The five hundred number, we, we didn't just pull that out. That was because of the, the number of lead service lines we have in Evanston. It's like eleven thousand plus. By twenty twenty-seven, when, when utilities will officially have to start replacing lead services in their communities, based on the amounts that we're currently replacing into twenty twenty-seven, we'll be at that five hundred replacements over a twenty-year period. So, that's where that number came from. And so, this table summarizes, you know, for twenty, the bond and water rate increases that's associated, there we go, that's associated with this graph, and those revised goals. So, for twenty twenty-four, I've mentioned the eighteen point one. The, the lead service line proposed water rate increases thirteen and a half percent. Previously scheduled rate increases four percent for twenty-four. So, that four percent is part of the lead service line replacement workforce development program. We're hiring seven full-time employees to help replace lead service lines. So, this year, we're experiencing a five percent for that program. Next year, we're scheduled to do a four percent. So, that's why it would be seventeen and a half percent in twenty-four instead of thirteen and a half. That's what that's about. And then, the percent debt revenue for distributions, twenty-eight point eight. And it works its way down, you know, through, over a ten-year period to, well, it, it reaches the less than twenty-five percent. The twenty twenty-five, there's a nine point eight percent previously scheduled rate increase. That one would be offset by a nine point eight percent decrease of the sewer rate. And so, it goes from twenty-four to twenty-nine, where we're seeing the thirteen and a half percent, the bonding amounts associated with each, and then, three and a half percent thereafter. Again, that maintains our fund ba- our fund, our reserves of five point eight million to three point two miles of water main, as well as the, the lead service line replacements at that five hundred lead service lines each year. And this table here represents the cost, the impact to the, to the retail payer. And starting in twenty twenty-three, it's, it's the annual utility cost for water and sewer, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars, twenty cents. By twenty twenty-nine, which is the last year of the thirteen and a half percent increases, it's twelve ninety-three thirty. And so, yeah, that, that represents all of the increases over that same ten-year period. And then, it's three and a half percent starting in twenty thirty through twenty thirty-four. And, and this summarizes the table here. The data indicates the average retail customer will experience a sixty-eight percent increase in their annual water and sewer bill from twenty-three to twenty-nine, when the last thirteen and a half percent proposed rate increase is implemented. The bi-monthly bill will increase from a hundred and twenty dollars and twenty cents to two hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-five cents, and the annual payment will increase from seven sixty-nine twenty to twelve ninety-three thirty. And community members who qualify for the affordable water and sewer rate will not be impacted by the proposed utility rate increases summarized above. And the affordable rate will be reviewed every three years to ensure that that rate remains affordable. It's currently under review now by outside agencies. And so, that's something that's ongoing as well. And this table here, it's included in the memo, I know it's kind of small. This is just showing in twenty twenty-four with the rate increase. You know, for Evanston, that puts us in the, in the middle between Womet and, and Weneka for the twenty twenty-four rate. And the affordable rate is all the way at the bottom, that's the lowest rate in, in the area. If, if, if these rates for everybody was to, was to, to be the same in ten years, for instance, Evanston's rate would be like the, the third highest in today's rates that we're looking at now. And, and so, this is, this is what that increase would look like, where our rate, where we put our rate in twenty twenty-four, and what the affordable water and sewer rate would look like compared to other communities as well. And, any questions?
Thank you very much. Councilmember Harris?
Good evening. Good evening, thank you so much. So, how do we determine affordable rate? I know I should know that, but off the top of my head, I don't.
So, there are like, we work with two agencies, Elevate and the Metropolitan Planning Council. And there are like five models that are used to determine affordability. Evanston looked at the lowest census tract? Is it census tract in Evanston to determine affordability based off of that census tract? And so, we use that information, we use the information from the, it's four or five models that are used to calculate what an affordable rate is, and we selected it based off of that.
Okay, thank you for that information. I just worry about the sixty-eight percent increase. And I get the notifications that say water issues in the, in the ward. And I, I've seen that my ward has a high number of, about to be cut off water. And I worry with the pending increase, what that will look like in heavily minority-based areas. So, if we don't price people out with taxes, we're gonna price them out with water. So, that just is a concern to me.
And if they're on the affordable rate, those increases won't impact those folks that are on the affordable rate.
Yeah, I'm, I'm assuming most of my people, most of my people aren't. Because again, when I look at the scale, Second Ward has a great number of people that are always on the list of about to be cut off or having issues with payment for water. So, I just worry about that. When I see sixty-eight percent, I'm trying to count my pennies and make sure, as a councilperson, I'll be able to afford water. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Reed?
Thank you, um, thank you, councilmember Harris. I'll, I'll start off where you left off. So, what is the affordable rate?
How much?
Yeah, yeah. Or an average, or however we?
So, for the, let me look at this here, this table. So, two seventy-nine for water, and this is, and this is per one hundred, one thousand gallons. And two fifty-nine for sewer. So, it's a combined of five thirty-nine per one thousand gallons.
And so, the number of seven sixty-nine twenty, that was combined, or that was just water?
That's combined.
That's combined, seven twen- or sixty-nine?
So, the
Figure that was the average?
Seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty cents?
Yeah.
That's combined water and sewer in twenty twenty-three.
Okay. And then, how many folks do we have using that affordable rate?
Right now, one hundred and seventy-seven.
Okay, well, that's just a good increase, I think, last time we talked about it.
It was low.
Yeah, it was seventeen, I remember, yeah. Okay, so that's good, still a lot more progress to be made there. Good. If someone doesn't pay their sewer bill, does their water get shut off?
Yes, it, it, they, they could end up on a shut-off list.
Okay, even for not paying sewer?
Yes.
Okay. How will this new rate impact? A lot of our folks who would qualify for that lower rate live in apartment buildings. I, I forget, how do we account for apartment buildings that are providing affordable housing? Because if we increase the rate on the apartment building, then they're gonna increase rent, and we'll be burdening those, those renters.
So, those folks that are renters that qualify for the affordable rate, they get an annual payment that would count towards. So, if the, if the property owner raised the, the rent or whatever because of that, then they get an annual payment.
Okay, thank you for that. And, and that payment is equal to what?
It's like the difference between the, the two, so the, it's like a difference between the affordable water rate, the regular water rate, times, there's a factor that we multiply by, times how many people are in the household. So, for instance, if it's just one person, they could, they would get an annual payment of like seventy dollars or something. If it's four people, it's seventy dollars times four. And it works the same way for both the water, you know, the water and the sewer.
Okay, and how many folks do we have? Do you know how many folks we have receiving that benefit?
Yeah, it's about, I wanna say fifty or sixty.
Okay, that's helpful. Two more questions outside of the realm there. So, one also, so, sorry, one last question. The water fund reserve, you mentioned, you, you're requesting an increase to five point eight million. That essentially would have just kept up with inflation from two thousand nine to now, correct?
So, the, I, I, I don't know if it's, if it's an inflation thing or not. The, the four million dollars that we were using prior to that from two thousand nine, you know, it was based on a different methodology. You know, the city's budget policy has practices in there that are somewhat different than that one. So, that one included like, you know, fluctuations in, in seasonal water use, emergencies. And it was one more. But it, it comes out to like four million dollars. A million dollars for this, a million dollars for that, two million dollars, you know, for this. And, and so, but I, I don't know if the inflation factored in between then and now, I don't know.
Okay.
Yes, so the sixteen point six percent is the, the city's budget policy.
For the general fund?
For the water fund.
Oh, oh, for the water fund, okay, okay. So, essentially inflation. So, two questions now. Outside of, and I, this might have an obvious answer, but just bear with me. Outside of the lead lines, why, why do we, why do we care if a water main is a hundred and twenty or eighty or sixty years old?
Failure. A cou- a couple of things. So, when we start replacing lead service lines, when we start
Outside of lead service lines? So, let's just assume that, just a failure rate?
Failure.
Great. So, with that, what, you know, what is the failure rate for, you know, a hundred and twenty years plus, eighty years plus, sixty years plus? And at what point are we, you know, if, if the water mains are fifty years old, and there's a two percent chance that it's gonna fail in the next ten years, or if they're, you know, eighty, or they're a hundred and twenty years old, and then there's a fifty percent chance that they'll fail in the next ten years? Do we have metrics like that to where we can determine what a healthy age, average age for our system is?
So, water main isn't created the same in a sense. So, there may be water main that's old, that is in sandy soil. And so, that soil isn't really all that corrosive. And so, that water main isn't being degraded as quick as water main that's in clay soil, that's more corrosive. And, and so, you can have younger water main that fail sooner just because of the kind of soil that it's in. And, and so, that kind of plays
So, then maybe age in and of itself isn't the best metric for determining?
Not always.
Not, so do we have, um, do we, can we somehow throw in that data about, do we know what water mains are in the sandy soil, or what are in clay soil, so we can?
We do.
Okay, and do we prioritize the replacement of, you know, so, we got an eighty-year-old one that's in the, the clay soil, but we have a hundred and twenty-year, one-year-old one that is in sandy soil, and so, it's
So, age is one criteria. So, when we're coming up with which water mains are we gonna replace this year, age is one part of that. Break history's another one, fire flow is another one, equity is one. So, there, there are about maybe five or six different things we look at to determine. to determine, okay, these are the water mains that we're going to replace this year.
I just didn't see that reflected in the, the graph there, you know, because I, I saw the Eighth Ward had, you know, a number of yellow lines on our, in our ward. And that seems good, but then we could have all clay soil there, and so then really we could be in the worst shape if it's not interplay, if all of that data isn't reflected in the visualization. Which, correct, is it, it's not reflected in that visualization?
No, it's, it's not.
That was just purely age.
It may be in the memo. I may have included it, what the criteria is, maybe in the memo, I would have.
Well, just, but just having an understanding of, you know, what the, the real condition is.
Yeah, it wasn't included here.
Okay. I'll stop there. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
I had my, I'm late on two.
So sorry, Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you. We'll go there.
I got it.
All right. Water service, as I, as I said when you presented this to Finance and Budget, this is one of the most fundamental services of government, and one of the most fundamental human needs. So having a little bit of, of safety factor built into our water treatment, our water distribution system is entirely appropriate. Waiting for something to break and then fixing it is not a good policy here. We do have water main breaks on a regular basis, about three or four a month. We've got a good team that can go out and fix them when they, when that does occur. But that's not, you know, the best solution moving forward. You change your oil in your car every five thousand miles or whatever, rather than waiting for the engine to break and, and never changing it and waiting for the engine to seize up. So I think what we're talking about here gets us back on the track of, you know, regular investment in maintaining our infrastructure. In one way or the other, we're going to have to pay for this, whether that comes from taxpayers or ratepayers. We're going to have to, we're going to have to pay for it. We haven't had a combined increase in water and sewer for, what, fifteen years?
No, seven, yeah, it's about seven years.
Okay, seven. So we're, you know, we're, you know, we've been robbing our, our, our future selves at the benefit of our current and our, and our past selves, kind of a similar trap we fell into with pensions. And so I think that we're generally on the right track here of, you know, making sure we don't dig ourselves any further into a hole and, and setting a reasonable path forward. So I want to talk about funding sources, and you had identified five funding sources, one of which was I E P A state revolving loan funds, no comment there. Bonds abated by the Water Fund, and you have laid, laid out, you know, kind of a policy over the next, whatever, ten years or so, that each year we're going to have to be floating a bond of anywhere from five percent to, you know, seventeen, twenty-three, thirteen, 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 and then, I'm sorry, that was the water rate increase, wrong column. Anyway, double-digit bonds every year. Is it fair to attribute that, the necessity of issuing that debt to our lead service line replacement requirements?
Yes, the, 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 the lead service line replacements, the additional water main replacements, tho, those are going to be the big portions. We, we previously, during the Finance and Budget Committee meeting, you know, we, we, we split the two, the water and distribution to see what was causing that, that decrease in, in the, the revenue, not the revenue, the, the minimum, the cash reserves.
Right.
And it was the distribution system that was causing it. At the, at the water plant, because of our wholesale contracts, and, and because of the revenue that's generated, when we, you know, replace a three hundred thousand nineteen thirty-four clearwell with a nineteen million dollar clearwell, that increases the revenue from our wholesale customers that, you know, we supply water to. So that covers debt service on projects like that, to where it doesn't impact the Evanston retail ratepayers. But because our ratepayers are solely responsible for these water mains and lead service lines of that hundred and fifty-six miles, ninety-nine percent of them, the Evanston retail ratepayer is responsible for them. And, and that's what's driving, you know, the, the bonds, the, the, the cash that we spend, I E P A loans, all of those.
Once our lead service lines are replaced, and that's going to take twenty years, we'll continue to be paying down those bonds, but we won't be any, issuing any new debt, at least for that purpose. Those lead service lines will stay replaced.
Correct.
We'll still have to maintain or replace a certain amount of water main each year.
Correct.
So eventually that, the bond amount each year of that will go down.
Correct. And, and what's a benefit too is, for instance, you know, the intake that's happening now, that, that has like a hundred-year life on it. You know, the debt that we take out on it is twenty years. And, you know, after that twenty-year period, and we're charging, you know, nine and a half percent return on rate, that's profit that after that twenty years isn't going towards that debt service anymore.
I want to, oops, I want to talk about that profit in a second, but next on my list was grants and loans and other sources of revenue, you know, specific to, but not limited to the lead service line. Can we reasonably expect that there will be some state or federal programs that might be able to help us out here? And we're not counting on them at this point, is, is my understanding, but maybe there will be something that materializes.
So we're, we're hopeful, we've applied for a five-year program for lead service line replacements through I E P A. Our project plan has been accepted. The funding has not been approved at this point, but the project plan is. So it's up to twenty-five million for that. As part of that, we hope that four million of that could potentially be in the form of, but that's not guaranteed, in the form of a grant, but that's not guaranteed.
It's not guaranteed. So we're not counting on that. And if we are successful in, in getting, if our application for this program is successful, or potentially future programs that don't yet exist, that could have a, a positive impact on our, our rates at some point in the future.
Yes, and we're also working with the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for a one million dollar grant that we could use for lead service.
So the numbers we're talking about here are essentially self-funding our lead service line replacement. Subject to revision if we get some additional sources of revenue.
Yes.
Okay, great. Now I want to talk about the, the wholesale water that we sell, and we do make money on that. How much do we make, and how are we enjoying, how are we, are we realizing the benefits of, of that profit?
So we make about six, just under seven million in profits, return on rate, from all of our wholesale customers. Three of them, they pay nine and a half percent return on rate, one of them pays ten percent. So it's, it's just under seven million dollars.
And that's gross. Of that seven, I think we said four goes to the general fund to cover essentially overhead.
So just revenue from, you know, charges for service, yeah, four transfers out into the general fund.
So that leaves about three million in the Water Fund. Is that three million, I guess my question is, how much more would our rate increase have to be if it weren't for this water that we were selling to wholesale customers?
So I can't give you a number what that would be, but I'm sure the recommendation would be higher in terms of what the rate increases would be, what the bonding amounts would be. If that, if you took that, if you took our wholesale dollars away, it, it would be higher, I would imagine.
All right, so we are making money on wholesale sales. That allows us to not raise rates as high as we otherwise would have to, or not borrow as much money as we otherwise would have to. You know, that profit is kind of baked into the numbers we're looking at here.
I, I would say yes.
Okay. And then the last source of revenue for the Water Fund is, is the, the water rate. And it's unfortunate that we have to increase rates so significantly over the next few years, but essentially we're just catching up to where we would have been if we had been raising them a little bit each year all along. It's the way I look at it, qualitatively. I haven't, you know, I haven't done the math, but I think that's a lesson for us moving forward. You know, we've got to pay for it at some point. It might be less painful to pay for it little by little than in one lump sum every once in a while.
And for many years, you know, when we were doing the sewer project, when we replaced, upgraded our sewer system, you know, our sewer rates went from like thirty cents up to over three dollars. And during that time, the water rate wasn't impacted, just to try not to make that total rate, you know, too, too expensive. And, and so now, you know, there are projects that we're doing now. This lead replacement law is a biggie because it is, it's, it's forcing utilities to have to do that. And then just the, the recommendation to do more water main, and so.
Yeah, and so I, I think I agree with both recommendations, to do more water main each year, and, and to raise the rates to cover the extra cost. So I appreciate the work here. I think the, the Water Department is, is one of our best departments in the city in terms of taking care of business and, and doing what needs to be done, doing it quietly. We just need to make sure you guys are getting the, the funding you need to keep doing it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for doing the forecasting. I was quite astonished by all the red that had not happened, and that seems to be a problem with the city, that we're just deferring and deferring. So I appreciate you all at least coming up with a projected schedule of trying to get those things done. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you so much. The Water Department does seem to be doing its job well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Reed?
That's the magic of an enterprise fund, I think. You've got to look at it like a business and account for everything. Just want to be really clear on two things. So one, on the rate for the, the affordable rate and the payments to renters, that's, that those payments will also increase sixty-eight percent?
Yeah, because it, it will be based on?
Difference between, okay, so that's going to increase. Just want to make sure. Are we, there, there are a number of questions about the, you know, revenue or the profit that we generate from our wholesale customers. One, I, I don't, I, great that we use this as an enterprise. I, I guess generally I'm a little uncomfortable with making money on water, but we, we make a profit here. So with that, are we budgeting for maintaining the infrastructure as far as the, the, the water mains that provide water to our suburban friends? Are we, and, on an annual basis, budgeting for the maintenance of, of that system?
I don't think that we're putting aside dollars each year towards like a thirty-six inch water main that we use to deliver water to those customers. We have recently inspected those water mains with, you know, swimmer, with, with technology. And so we know the condition of those mains, and, you know, the plan for that is to continue to do that in intervals, so that we do have a good idea of what the condition is. And so if we start seeing a deterioration, we most certainly can plan to do that.
I mean, we, we know that there will be a deterioration at some point. So I, I just wonder if, so I guess we're not setting aside funding annually to be sure that in, you know, however old these things are, in twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty years, that we'll be ready to replace it. So we're not doing that at this moment.
Not at this time.
Well, I would advise us to maybe chip some of that off as the, what we're looking at is profit, to make sure that we're not, again, repeating the same cycle where we're not budgeting for, and please correct me if I'm, or if there's information that was left out.
Dave Stomack again. So we just did rehabilitate the thirty-inch water main. And so that is part of the water supply to some of our wholesale water customers. So we were able to get an I E P A loan for that, but the wholesale water customers will actually help pay for, for that thirty-inch water main as well, as par is their rate. So when we look at the, the water mains that provide water to our wholesale water customers, they have to buy into that as well. So we don't have to save up money for that. It's just to be something that we would bond for, hopefully get a low-interest loan rate on.
But if we save for it upfront, we could save the taxpayers that four percent or six percent or whatever it would be.
We don't pay for it upfront. We bond it, and then the debt service, when we do a project at the water plant, the debt service that we pay for the first twenty years, the, the twenty million dollar clearwell replacement, we did not have to raise water rates to Evanston residents because the, the, the return on rate from our wholesale water customers was sufficient enough to pay the full debt service without having to raise any of the rate for the Evanston retail customers.
But just, you know, if, if, if I'm Apple and I'm making iPhones, yeah, it, it, my time is up, but I, I'll very, I'll go quickly. But, you know, if, if I'm designing any product, I also want to make sure that I'm keeping my product as affordable as possible for my end user, so they don't switch to someone else who's doing it more efficiently.
Then we would have to start chipping away money and put it all aside to replace the entire water plant. And, and that's not economically feasible for us to do, and it isn't an impact because the debt service is paid for by the customers, not by us.
Which means at some point, they're, they're, they're having to charge their residents a higher rate because we didn't maintain our system well enough.
We, we do maintain our system well enough to provide adequate water on a daily basis to them. That's all we, that's our criteria, and when we have to replace it, they have to pay for their share of it. Evanston residents only use fifteen percent of the water plant, and we generate enough money from the other eighty-five percent users to not have to raise the rate to the fifteen percent. And yet our water rate to our wholesale water customers is one of the lowest in the Chicago land area, which is why we were successful in bringing in more wholesale water customers. So I, I understand.
So just, just to, just to be clear, am I completely off-base in that if we were to set aside more money annually to make sure we're maintaining the system, that, that would overall create savings for our retail users as well? For our wholesale users as well?
This is a, a catch-22 in that, that was the past philosophy, that we shouldn't spend money on the water plant because it's going to be burdened by the Evanston retail payers. That's not the case. Because we were taking on twenty million dollar projects and we're generating enough revenue to pay off the debt service without hitting Evanston retail rates, once that debt service is paid off in twenty years, that's just pure return on rate for us. And then if you want to start putting some of that money away to, to do other capital improvements at the water plant, that's, that would be feasible. But right now, there isn't enough revenue stream to do that. When we get completed with a fifty million dollar intake project, and the debt service on that is twenty years for half of it and thirty years for the other half of it because of our funding mechanism there, our, our wholesale customers are going to pay for that for a hundred years, and we only have to pay debt service on it for twenty or thirty years. And we're just going to realize that return on rate, and that's when we would have the money to start setting money aside to start doing this. We have what's called a depreciation improvement and extension account in the water plant already. So we are doing somewhat of what you're saying, but that doesn't generate near the amount of money that we need for the projects that, that are done at the water plant or on the distribution system.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? I had just a couple of questions. So I know for twenty-three, we, for twenty-two, rather, we budgeted a little over four million for the general fund out of water. What did we budget for this year?
So for twenty-two, it was six point nine million. So for 22, it was 6.9 million, I think. And then 23, it initially was 4.9, but then the bids came in high and the need went to, it was 6.4, I think, in 22.
No, 6 point, it was 4. The, the funds that we transferred to the general fund. So I see that we budgeted in 23, I'm looking at the audit, that we budgeted 4.049 million.
Oh, for the transfer. Okay.
Right. So I'm just saying, what did we budget this year to transfer from the water to the general fund? Is it like four again?
Pretty much the same.
About four million again? Okay. That's what, and is that what you would recommend again for next year for 24? Also a transfer of about four million? Because I know we put that into our budget.
That's factored in to continue.
Okay. So we will be looking again at, that would be factored in. Thank you. And then I know there was a little confusion last time about our, our reserve policy, about our reserve policy. It's 16.6 for the water fund. And I think in the end, you said it was 6.7 million, not four million. That was what our res.
5.8.
Was 5.8. Okay. That's our reserve. Okay. And so that 25, and the 25 million that you've applied for from the IEPA, do we know when we'll receive a response as to whether we're, will be granted that?
So it's 25 million over five years. So it would be 5 million a year. And we would know in the spring of each year as to whether or not we're going to get it.
Okay. So like March or April, we'll know each year regarding the 5 million?
Yes.
Because I do understand there is, there are considerable grants coming up, both federal and state, for lead service.
There's only one federal program that's out there right now, and it went to the state already. And the state has pretty much indicated that, and Daryl can respond to this better than I, but they only want to give the grant forgiveness or the, the loan forgiveness, a grant to the communities that have economic impact. So in Evanston, I believe there's only two census tracts that would qualify potentially for loan forgiveness money. The rest of it will be a low interest loan. So Evanston does not anticipate receiving a lot of grant money.
Okay.
So that's already out there. There's nothing else coming from the feds. And, and then how the feds distribute the money did not seem very equitable to the state of Illinois because of the number of lead service lines that we have in Illinois. We got less money than states that have fewer lead service lines than our state. But that's at the national level. It's little that we can do there. And it's already done.
Got it. So about 20% of what we've applied for, only, only about 20% would be grant? And the other three quarters is?
I don't even think it's 20%.
It's not even that high. Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's very low percent.
But anyways, one, it's low interest. It's the I, you said it's a.
Everything would be low interest loans.
Which would be better than GoBonds, for sure. Okay. And we should know again March or April?
That's generally when we hear yes.
Okay. Thank you. And I think, is there, I mean, so I think dovetailing a little bit on Councilmember Reed's questions. I mean, if, if our wholesale customers weren't paying on the debt service, it could potentially also lower our rates. Right? I mean, I, I think there's various ways to go on this in terms of funding. But I just want to keep us all open to those options and what will end up benefiting most, our Evanston residents in terms of rates for us. We should have decent rates, given that this is, it should be a relatively lucrative business. And I think at 7 million, I just don't know, how many contracts about do we have?
Four.
We have four contracts? And what, those are with?
Northwest Water Commission, Skokie, Morden Grove Niles, and Lincolnwood.
Okay. And those vary, you know, in terms of what each one pays, like some might be, the agreement might, they might pay for some aspect that another one isn't paying for.
It, it's based on assets, value of assets that they use is one component. Another component is depreciation. And the final component is a quantity charge. And the, the return on rate portion of it is based on a valuation that we have done each year and the percent of the plant that that customer uses. So like, you, you, if, if you're our largest customer that pay, that's 54% of the water that comes through the plant and leaves out goes to that customer, their calculation is going to be different. The expenses that are used, the amount of water that they use, there, there are a number of variables that go into the calculation that determines what each customer will ultimately end up paying. And so we're not, the contracts aren't saying, hey, all of our customers are going to pay this rate. It's based on the assets that they use, the percentage, the percentages of the plant that they use, the amount of water that, that's treated and goes out to them, as well as the, the, the quantity of water that they use in comparison to the expenses.
Okay. Thank you. And are those annually renewed? Or how does that, how do those contracts?
They're, they're 40-year contracts.
Okay. And are they all on, are they on varying terminating dates or?
So three of our contracts are new. And so they, just in the beginning of them, one of our contracts expire in 2034, 2035. So that's like the next one that would come up.
Great. Thank you.
If I could, I'd just like to explain that our water rate to our wholesale water customer uses the American Water Works Association nationally recognized formula for wholesale water rate development. So yes, each of our wholesale water customers pay a different rate per thousand gallons, but it's all based on the same formula type contract. So, and then part of the contract is a quantity rate, which is based on the actual cost of producing water. So if we have a large spike in electricity or a large spike in chlorine cost, that cost is, is distributed right onto our wholesale water customer. So it protects the city from any kind of large increase because we just pass that cost on to our wholesale water customers, baked right into the contract. So this is a very safe and sound water supply contract that is nationally recognized. It's been upheld in court when all the municipalities around Chicago sued Chicago in the 1980s. This is the, the water rate contract that was upheld by the, by the courts. So that's why Evanston selected it. And again, because it's nationally recognized and it provides protection to the, the provider as well as the customer. So it's a very fair and equitable situation. So.
Thank you, Councilmember.
And we tell them what we're doing. Actually, this week, we have a wholesale customer meeting. We meet with our wholesale customers twice a year. We have a meeting at the plant this week. And we outline everything that we're doing, everything that's coming up. So it's very transparent and, and they're aware of, of our activities as well.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Reed?
My time is up. Just a quick question. So the $4 million annual transfer from the water fund to the general fund, when was that number generated by a consultant? How many years ago?
Was that in 2009?
No, no. I think it was three years ago.
Three years ago. And, you know, for example, this year, we know that we are increasing wages substantially over the next few years for many of our employees and employees in the water department and other departments that deal with the water department. So are, is that $4 million transfer keeping up with the new cost of employees? And so will we see a higher, will it be more than 4 million for 2024?
And I'm not sure. Are we increased, do we increase that annually?
Yes, we do adjust based on the kind of cost of leaving the contracts. I mean, library is the one which kind of pays us some of the TIF funds where we charge money to, and comes to the general fund. And obviously the water fund would be there treated the same there.
Okay. So we will see an increase that is at least on pace with.
A reasonable increase in a single digit to all the funds, particularly some of those. Like library has a thing that, okay, they can get what the ABSMI gets. So that will be like an increase, whatever the ABSMI get, we will raise the amount by that. So, but generally, yeah, TIF funds, I mean, we see the capacity of the TIF funds. And if we generally see that, okay, it's there a 5 to 8% increase in overall cost, we would bump up our transfers from TIF funds to the general fund accordingly too. And the same thing would apply to the water fund.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation and answering all our questions. Okay, our next item is, would someone like to move, go ahead?
I will move item SP3, update on the 2023 capital improvement plan.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, SP3. Ms. Biggs will present SP3. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Laura Biggs. I'm the city engineer. I actually did not prepare a presentation. I received a request from a number of people asking just for a status update related to the capital improvement projects for, that were budgeted in 2023. So I provided that in the packet. I'm happy to answer any questions or if you have follow-up questions, of course, feel free to email me. But I don't have anything specific to say.
Okay. Thank, oh, okay. Councilmember Neesma?
The Main Street project from Maple to Hinman is in the 2023 list. Did not get done this year. I did not see it in the 2024 list.
So that contract has been awarded.
Okay.
And what you're seeing in the 2024 lists are sort of the new contracts that have not yet been awarded. Towards the end of the year, we will do a rollover that will show all the things that are under contract that need to be funded as part of the 2024 budget. But it is, I mean, staff is aware and the funding is committed.
I didn't think you'd forgotten about Main Street. I just wanted to make sure.
I could never forget about that project.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hadda-Carries?
Hi. I was looking through the list and I could not, I know it's a small project, but the Cleveland Asbury pedestrian crosswalk, I'm assuming that's in the traffic calming, bicycle and pedestrian improvements project?
Yes. So that would be under traffic calming.
That's still, seems like it. Okay.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Is there a motion to accept and place this on file?
I think we made that motion when we introduced the.
Okay. All right. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Okay, next, would someone like to move SP4?
I'll move item SP4 for discussion. This is the proposed 2024 capital improvement program.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Again, Ms. Biggs, thank you.
Thank you. We just need the presentation up.
Four and three. Four and three. Jonathan?
Did you?
We're good.
Go ahead. Okay. Take it away. Thank you.
Members of the city council, mayor pro temp, city clerk, city manager, the staff has worked very hard to put together a draft capital improvement program to talk about for 2024. We have been on a schedule where typically we always start in April or May to try to pull together the project needs. This year, we have, based on feedback we received last year, we have spent some time going to the Parks and Rec Board ahead of time, as well as the Finance and Budget Committee. And we are introducing it tonight, but it will be adopted with the budget, at least traditionally, it's always been adopted with the 2024 budget. So our capital improvement program is made up of a number of different categories. We divided up really just for ease of talking about and being able to track it into streets, transportation, parks, facilities, water treatment, and a miscellaneous category. Last year, we tried out putting in a sustainability category, but because so many of the capital improvement projects touch on sustainability, it's sort of led to some confusion in that it only included a few of the projects. So we just discontinued that. That didn't work very well. And the ones that are just pure sustainability, such as our electric vehicle charging program that we're rolling out for City Fleet is appearing in the miscellaneous category. So in terms of funding, there are a number of different funding sources, of course. They, many of the funding sources are really based on the assets that they're associated with, such as water revenues are used to pay for water assets. Same for sewer. Motor fuel tax has to be spent on projects that are approved basically through the, that are built to Illinois Department of Transportation standards. It's based on funding that's rebated back from the motor fuel, state motor fuel tax. And it relies heavily on transportation only type things. And then we have some that are geographic in nature, like community development block grant funds that go to low median income areas as well as tax increment financing. The one thing that is, no limit to it in terms of where you can spend it, is general obligation bonds. This is often the only part of the capital improvement program that we really discuss, but it is by far the most flexible spending that we have. So this is actually a little hard to see, the labels, but the, the biggest blue area shows the proposed general obligation bonds. As a percentage of all of our funding, it's followed by water, IEPA loans, and WIFIA. This is really showing that a big portion of our capital improvement program, about 40% of it, is really going towards one project, which is our intake replacement project that we have ongoing this year and through next year. And so that $46 million contract is really skewing our capital improvement program high. And thus, the WIFIA and the water IEPA loans are largely about that particular project. But you can see that a little over a quarter of our, our program is funded by, is proposed to be funded by general obligation bonds. But now, this is the slide that is very telling, which is that when we come to transportation or water, those areas of our CIP have a lot of funding sources outside or inside our budget that can be leveraged that are not directly general obligation bonds. However, parks and facilities, this is a totally different story. Parks and facilities have almost no opportunities. There's an occasional grant for parks. This particular year, we are getting some money, for example, that is actually ARPA funds through Evanston Thrives for the Independence Park project. There's a section that's a plaza that serves the central business district, Central Street Business District. But when we get to facilities, there, there's nothing that comes in as an outside grant. Years ago, when there were more federal earmarks and state earmarks, we very occasionally would get one of those. But historically, this has been the problem. And so while the city legitimately does try to control debt, this has resulted into really controlling and limiting the funding that we can spend on parks and facilities. So it's causing an unintended consequence of underfunding our parks and facilities program. As we put together the program this year, we were pretty easily able to identify three challenges that really impact our ability to deliver on our infrastructure improvements. So the first of these was discussed by Darrell King previously. I won't go into it that much. But essentially, the issues with the age of the water main, skyrocketing materials and supply costs associated with water main replacement, as well as the additional requirements for lead service line replacement are really driving up that portion of our budget. During our CIP last year, we received a lot of feedback from people on this council, as well as some other people in the community, that it seemed like we were spending a lot of time doing massively large parks projects that were very expensive. And could we find a better way? Why were we doing that? Other communities aren't necessarily doing that. Could we do something differently? So based on that feedback, we really looked at how we were doing things and what was causing us to do these large, one-off, but very expensive projects. And so this second one, which I refer to as Legacy Parks, we talked a lot about in the Parks and Rec Board's presentation earlier, but. the Parks and Rec Board's presentation earlier, but this is just a little bit more background. So basically, we looked at our parks, and they really fund, fall into three categories in our CIP, and we reorganized the Parks CIP to make it easier to see where our funding was going in terms of our parks. So the first is community parks, and these are most of our larger parks, like the lakefront parks, James Park, Lovelace Parks, that are regularly used by people outside of the immediate neighborhood. These are destination spaces that get a lot of foot traffic, they are very well-loved by our community, and consequently, they do need regular investment just to kind of keep them in good condition. So this is the proposed capital improvement program for 2024, for parks, for the community parks. It includes a number of projects that were already ongoing from this year, including dog beach ADA accessibility, for example, but also does include some new ones. We have had a couple of specific requests that you saw earlier from the Parks and Rec Board that got added into this. This, the whole Parks and Facilities CIP especially, is really much larger than the staff can execute, but we are providing a list of needs, and then we can talk up with the city council about ways to prioritize projects later. But then we get into our legacy parks, and these are the eleven parks that have at least been twenty-six years since there's been any really significant investment in terms of capital improvement. And we use the number twenty-six years because the person that works primarily on parks, these parks were not improved since she got here, many of them have probably been longer since they had significant investment. So when we look at these parks, and in fact, when we look at the really large parks over the last couple of years, they were also legacy parks. Parks like McCulloch, Garden Park, were the parks that had not received any real investment for a while. And when we talk about why are these so expensive, why can't we just change out playground equipment? And the truth is that that is a strategy that can be used for a lot of parks, but for these particular neighborhood parks, when we look at, well, let's just change out the playground equipment, oh, we've got to comply with modern standards, maybe there's power lines that go directly over the equipment, there's other reasons why it doesn't conform, there's, in this particular one, you can see the pathway that goes right up to the playground equipment that would need to comply with ADA, does not. So this particular park has significant pathway work that needs to be done throughout the park, and then if there's a gazebo and it hasn't had any sort of improvement for a long time, oh, we should probably look at that and the courts, and by the time you start looking at all of these things, you're basically reimagining the park to try to get it to what it, how it would reflect our modern-day standards and the community needs. So what we are currently doing with our CIP, and I say currently, it's pre-2024, is that the vast majority of our one to three million dollars that we spend in capital improvement on parks is going to fund one or two of these legacy parks per year, but then other parks are just largely not invested in, unless something catastrophic happens and we have to take out a bunch of playground equipment, and then we might choose to do something. So we're doing very little regular maintenance, and I would suggest that probably the most regular thing we've been doing, which I am sure many in the community would agree has not been enough, is court resurfacing, which in the last two or three years, we have started investing substantially in tennis court resurfacing. So we would propose to change that, we can look at how we retire the, or reinvest in these legacy parks over the next five years, and try to get through those. I say five years because honestly, even if we take five years to get through all of them, some of them we'll just be removing wholesale playground equipment and stuff by the end of the five years, I mean, these are really not in great condition. But then to go to redoing this regular investment, doing things like just going into a park and changing our playground equipment, going and looking at modernizing the lighting, doing that kind of stuff on a regular basis, the challenge is that that would require us to sort of double spend during the next five years, and would dramatically increase what we're spending on parks if we were trying to do that. Now, I would suggest that we are in the middle of the Parks Strategic Plan, we should be getting that document sooner, so this is a strategy, which we can work with a consultant to make sure that plan reflects this strategy, but it is likely that we would want to update it in 2024 when we're preparing the 2025 budget. So when we prepare the proposed CIP for 2024, we're looking at dividing it up, so neighborhood parks that are legacy parks, and then neighborhood park work that is non-legacy. We have had requests for dog park installations, that's on there, the Mason Park project is sort of ongoing, it was paused for a bit while we were working through some issues with the property conversion from Foster Field with the IDNR, but that project, as soon as we get some feedback, additional statements from the IDNR, we're planning on moving forward. And that project, I should indicate, is funded largely by the West Evanston TIF. And then adding a section to our CIP, which this part has been pretty lacking, we've done some very minimal stuff up till now, but really looking at how we would do investment and modernization, I think these numbers are lower than what we would normally need to spend, but they are the maximum we could possibly manage with the staffing that we have, and I would work with our consultants on the strategic plan to update these for the long term. So when we look at this, this creates a $10.9 million program, of which nine of 10 million dollars essentially is general obligation bonds. Now, we have a huge issue with staffing in our Parks CIP team, and that is really, we have a half of land, a half FTE, zero point five FTE, there we go, a landscape architect that works on this, and I have been working, our team has been working to have zero point five of a civil engineer from our transportation group helping out, because there's just no way that the one half-person time could possibly manage the parks programs we've had, even up to now. But just to manage the existing, we really need another landscape architect, that person could then take a look at starting to implement this regular annual investment, but if we truly are going with that new alignment, then we probably, in future years, would need additional landscape architect staff to help out with it, because it would still be a substantial increase over what we are doing now. Similarly, we have our legacy facilities, a very similar situation that has developed, and I think a lot of this information has been previewed with the city council before, but we have these six facilities, of which two we are starting to work on, where we are struggling with how to manage these projects, and keep these facilities in service. So as we look at the long-term CIP, just because of the age of the facilities, we would recommend reaching some conclusions on how to manage those facilities over the next five to eight years. All of those facilities have a strategic plan that's being developed just for that facility, and we are sort of ninety percent done with the drafts of all those plans. We've been a little bit hampered because one of our, we have two architect positions, and one of them's been vacant all year due to a retirement. So this is another thing where we're really looking at, how can we retire those facilities, but then get into a regular program of investment and modernization? So these are the six facilities, we are proposing some work in those facilities next year, that includes primarily focusing on the Ecology Center renovation, which is in design, the Service Center North Island Fuel System Replacement, which is in design and nearly ready to go out to bid, and then some Service Center work. We're further along in the Service Center Capital Improvement Program than the other legacy, the three remaining legacy ones after that, but we would propose budgeting some money to hire consultants to work through the Civic Center and Police Fire Headquarters, regardless of what those decisions are made. We hope to be making those decisions early next year, and then we would want to move forward with whatever the next steps are for those. If we chose, or were not able to move forward, or other, you know, decision made to delay those, we simply would not incur the bonds for those, funding those programs. There are a number of non-legacy facility things, facilities are a little more complicated than parks, it's not quite so easy to just still down exactly what is needed. We have some fairly serious things going on in the Bent Park, Field House has been closed for quite some time, which has impacted our ability to provide Parks and Rec programming at Bent Park. Fire Station Five, there's an ongoing issue with the building envelope, which we have not yet sorted through, we are bringing on a new architect, we're hoping that person will help us with that project, and so those two are pretty big. We also then have a number of locker room and kitchen improvements, I mean, we talked about the Levy Center, our fire stations, we have some that the kitchens are very impacted through heavy use, and then just other stuff going on. With the Fifth Ward School, we have budgeted money to look at what we want to do with the future of the Fifth Ward School, or with Fleetwood Jordane, understanding that the Fifth Ward School is going to have some dramatic impacts in that facility and the programs that are coming out of that. The schedule for the Fifth Ward School, the school district is using Cordigan Clark, the architect that provided the original design, to, to provide the construction management for the construction. They are releasing the entire program as, in several different bid packages, the first bid package, which is demolition and some site utilities, they've actually released for pricing, that is anticipated to go to District 65 Board for approval in early to mid-October, last schedule I saw, that actually might have been delayed slightly to late October, early November. But they're going to be putting up a fence around their part of the site to start construction prior to the end of the year, and then they will continue to release bid packages through early next year and get those approved through District 65. So as that starts to happen, you can see that we are going to need to start dealing with some of the realities of having Foster Field taken out of service for the long term. What will replace it is a play space, we're working with a, through an MOU with the school district to allow us to continue to use that play space, but that's not the same as the athletic field that we were able to program prior to now. And then starting to look at investment and modernization. Again, this isn't quite so clear-cut in terms of if we just do these five things, then we have a regular program, but there are some things that we need to continue working on, both to just, we have a lot of roofs, there's always some that need to be replaced and have reached the end of their useful life, but also rolling out our ADA transition plan and modernized lighting in compliance with CARP. So again, we currently are a little short on staff, and if some of these really large projects start going through, I think we need to consider bringing on another architect or two, but for this year, we're not particularly looking for that. Instead, instead, we are proposing increasing our seasonal budget to account for a part-time position that's needed with an architect to come on and assist us with some of our I don't have the detailed plan in this proposal, I would tell you that street, water, sewer, you can review the capital improvement program, I know this is a long meeting, I'm happy to go through that some other time, but we are able to leverage a lot of other funding sources to be able to manage those particular programs. A lot of times, the geo-debt is really only used as matching funds in street water and transportation, there are some items in other transportation that it does, does pay for directly, specifically things like sidewalks and crosswalk improvements, there aren't a lot of other options out there, but you can see here again that we're leveraging a lot of other funds to get the work done that's not geo-debt. And then our miscellaneous category, which has a typo, the total for public art should really only be $30,000, I apologize for that, we'll fix it for the next presentation, but this, there are a few that are purely just CARP studies that are largely run out of our sustainability group, and those do appear in here. Water treatment, building and storage, we discussed some of that with Darrell's presentation, the single largest project is the intake on this one. And so then, what we need to do is, because the capital program is really too large for the staffing that we have currently, we really need to look at how to right-size it. So to that, last year, we did a similar exercise, these criteria that are listed here were the criteria that we worked with the city council to come up with a right-sizing program. I'm not sure how people felt about that now that a year has gone by, and I'm open to hearing if there's other criteria that people would be interested in using. One of those things is CARP, and actually, we are going to the Environment Board on Thursday to discuss how the capital improvement program addresses CARP strategies. And so the next steps for this really are just looking at, it would be very helpful, I think, for staff to understand feedback on the strategies that we have put out here, understanding that there are big change in how we particularly fund the facilities and parks programs, and then looking at the criteria we use to prioritize projects, and if that's something, we want to do something similar this year, or if there's a different methodology we want to go through.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Hatakaris?
Engineer Biggs, I just wanted to share that personally, I liked the criteria that we used last year, it was very helpful for myself to have those different categories to, you know, sort through all the capital improvement projects and make the decisions based on that criteria. I'd be open to maybe adding one more category, I don't know what that would be, but if you folks find something that, you know, would also help us prioritize further, that'd be appreciated, yeah.
I'll do a small response to that one. We are working with our new equity and coordinator to develop Equity Index, I don't know that it will be applicable to this year's capital program, but there are some that, projects that are obviously focused in more in CDBG areas, and I don't just mean that, it's CDBG-funded, but programs that focus in some of our more vulnerable census blocks. So the equity thing will be based at least partially on that.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you. First comment is, I'm really glad that sustainability is now kind of permeating the entire CIP, so that's a good thing, I think that's moving in the right direction. It's going to be incumbent upon all of us to make sure we keep our eyes on that, and we're, you know, maybe separately tracking goals, our CARP goals, but I'm glad that sustainability is starting to filter through the various categories. It's obvious here that we have, that our capital needs far outweigh the, it's far larger than the available funding, so we do have some hard discussions coming up, and we're not intending to do that here at this meeting tonight, we've got some, you know, individual meetings lined up over the next few days, I'll save a lot of my specific comments for those, for that meeting. But a couple of things I want to point out, that, I think I mentioned this before, but of the $112 million, you know, potential requests here, only $32 million is coming from geo-bonds. When it comes to parks, I really appreciate that you're looking to add staff internally, I'm wondering if that's enough, based on the presentation we had from the Parks and Rec Board earlier tonight, you know, I would be open to staffing up to whatever degree makes sense internally, to save money on what we're currently penciling and going to consultants. One or the other, the work needs to get done, you know, my hypothesis is that if we have adequately staffed up, we can do the work, we can do more for less with less, fewer consultants and more in-house staff.
If, if we realign our strategy, when we do these large parks, the number of drawings and specifications and design hours, and the community engagement hours that go into it, something way beyond our ability to provide in-house. It all... it, something way beyond our ability to provide in-house. It also requires a lot of disciplines that we don't have. So it makes sense to consult out those types of projects. But when we look at doing smaller, more consistent projects, just replacing playground equipment, looking at pathway resurfacing, and those kinds of things are much more amenable to being done by in-house staff. And so one of our goals would be to, because we'll always have consultants for some of these big projects. You know, you do the shoreline stabilization, you're hiring a consultant. But our goal would be to switch to having more in-house staff in the long term to be able to better manage some of these smaller things that require less community engagement and less design specialties. And so it would be-
Whether it's in parks or public works or some routes.
Yeah. So that is, one of the benefits of realigning the strategy is five years from now, we would be hiring fewer consultants if we staff up appropriately in capital planning.
I think philosophically, that's the right direction, in my opinion.
It's another comment we heard a lot of, so we were trying to figure out how we could integrate that into the five-year plan.
But you're not proposing hiring any more civil engineers?
Not for our parks work, but as the water main stuff happens that would require additional civil engineering, almost all of our water main is currently designed in-house, and it would be challenging to double it with the existing staff.
Yeah, yeah. And we have some vacancies now, so-
We do.
The plan is to fill the vacancies, but then add some additional positions.
We would love to fill the vacancies. We've had a number of long-term vacancies in civil engineering. It's a pretty tough job market. And so that's something that the city manager and I are starting to work on and really looking at, taking a hard look at how we do that. But that doesn't, whether we have vacancies or not, doesn't change the need for more positions. And so fundamentally, what we've been doing is we have been hiring some consultants out of our salary line item to try to make up for lack of civil engineers. We still need to find that money somewhere. But generally, we found through an analysis that it costs us about half as much to do work in-house than it does to consult it out.
I wonder if there's a way to leverage the suppliers of Parks and Rec equipment who are eager to sell us stuff. And, you know, to what extent can we ask them to provide proposed designs, for example, that might take some of the cost burden off of us, whether it's internal or consultant?
Well, that really applies when you're talking playground equipment and not a lot else. But if your project is to go in and do playground equipment replacement, then yes, you can definitely leverage that type of thing. Now, it's not usually entirely just that, but it, that can be a lot of the design work when it comes down to it. It's, we have found that Evanston residents are really demanding in terms of what their parks look like and wanting to have a say in exactly what's going in. But I think there is a pathway forward where we just talk about maybe some very brief questions, like what kind of style of parks are you thinking about? Here's some different types of playground equipment, just getting some rough feedback, and then using the manufacturer to provide a lot of the consulting.
Evanston residents certainly do have a lot of opinions. And I like that we do public engagement when we're talking about major park renovations. I wonder if there's a way to maybe streamline that process and make it, you know, cost a little bit less, but also get the, the public engagement that we need. So, you know, topics for future conversations for sure. One last comment. If there's time, I would love for the Utilities Commission to have a look at this, which is not something I think we've ever done in the past. But I know the Utilities Commission gets regular reports on capital projects underneath their scope of work. It'd be great to have their input on what those projects are.
Okay. I will talk with Daryl about how we can get that-
Okay.
-presentation there.
Thank you. More for tomorrow or whenever it is when we get together. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Burns?
In addition to the individual meetings that you'll have with council members, is this also going back to finance and budget? Just trying to understand the timeline on CIP moving forward and what other meetings you expect to be at?
So the CIP is, the whole budget process, I should say, is at this point, you know, two and a half months likely from being adopted, which is not a lot of time in the grand scheme of things. And so I certainly am happy to go back to finance and budget. I think that over time, not just this year, but continuing into next year and future years, looking at the funding of these projects is something that's a really important discussion, and that committee is going to be really crucial. I'm not sure how much in terms of prioritizing specific projects for this year's budget, but I certainly would like to go back and talk about potential funding levels.
And then when do you, when do you anticipate this coming back to council for discussion?
I don't know that that date has been set.
Manager, so do you have a? Okay. I think that's all. That's enough time. I have, I do have a proposal that will make its way through committee. It will be discussed hopefully at the next Financial Budget Committee. I was going to give a preview of that today, but I think we have enough time to have the discussion in committee and then eventually as a full council. So that's all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I guess I'd also like to just dovetail a little bit on Councilmember Newsma's, just questions regarding the consulting fees for new, new park designs to see if we can do better somehow in the cost of our new parks. It just seems like, I think it's about $700,000 for next year. That's in the budget for just consulting fees on these. It seems, seems high. Like, how can we do a little bit better in, in pricing? Some, you know, residents told me about the Skokie new Central Park that they built the whole thing with resurfacing playground splash pad, pathways, fitness stations, everything for 1.2, but Independence Park is, we're looking at 1.7. So I guess to see how we can reduce costs, if we can do better on that end with regard to consulting fees. And, and I do think it would be helpful, I mean, for, I think for finance and budget to look at the priorities that you've set forth in terms of capital improvement and really look at what we can afford and, and how we should pay for it. I think that's really the purview of finance and budget than to make a recommendation to council. So thank you for your presentation. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Reed?
Yes, thank you. I just turned on my lights, so no worries. Thank you. I really, I guess I want to talk to my colleagues for a quick second here. And, you know, we, we'll get the full budget on October 6th, 9th, 10th, some, somewhere around there. The conversation that we have not had yet, and that hopefully we will have, is about revenue to pay for some of these new expenses. And this is just CIP. This doesn't even get us to the, to the full budget yet. And, and, you know, while folks in the public and even on this diece may not agree with everything I've put forward, over $1 million in new revenue for us to consider, you know, both officially and, you know, by calling folks, over $1 million in new revenue for us to consider for this year. And I think we're going to have to really think about what our priorities are and whether we are willing to, you know, take the necessary steps to ensure that we're providing enough funding. Now, $1 million annually isn't going to change everything and provide all the funding we need, but it, it's a step in the right direction. And so paying for parking rates at our city parks or at our, you know, Robert Crown and James Park and some of our larger parks, you know, and increase in the wheel tax, you know, self-checkout kiosk fees. There are plenty of things that will not overly burden regular working-class Evanstonians. And we really have to consider whether or not we are willing to, 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 to do, take some tough steps in order to pay for this stuff, which we know is, most of it is a priority of this council and this body. And so I just want to throw that out there as we get closer and closer to budget data. And when we have to start making the tough decisions on what to fund and what not to fund, whether to raise property taxes, whether to issue new bonds, how much we're going to issue new bonds, we should be thinking about new revenue and how we can do that in a way that is not regressive. Thank you.
Okay. I think that's all the comments. Thank you very much, Ms. Biggs. Okay. So I think that brings us to Call of the Wards. All right. So we'll start with Councilmember Harris.
I'm sorry.
Do I go in?
Newsma.
Newsma.
No report.
Councilmember Newsma.
No report.
Councilmember Burns?
No report.
Councilmember Ravel?
No report.
Councilmember Reed?
Ward meeting on September 28th at the Robert Crown Center, our first ward meeting outside of the ward. So join us. It'll be a hybrid meeting. And we'll have Assessor Fritz Kegy at that meeting to discuss, the Assessor's office and property taxes. We'll also have a gentleman from Pallet Shelters to discuss Pallet Shelters and the possibility of bringing those to Evanston, as well as we'll have our police department and we'll have an open forum for folks to discuss things. But Fritz Kegy's the big, big name, and we invite folks from all over the city to join us.
Thank you. Councilmember Herakaris?
Ninth Ward Office hours are on September 29th at Reprise Coffee Roasters from 9:00 to 11:00. See you there.
Thank you. Councilmember, first ward, we will have a Zoom meeting, Zoom War meeting this Thursday at 7:00, and an in-person public safety meeting with Officer Rust on Tuesday at 4:00 at the Graduate Hotel. And Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. Thank you so much for you all's patience. I had to cancel last week's war meeting because I wasn't feeling well. As you noticed, I walked off the dais and went straight on. So I will reschedule that and it will be a Zoom. A date has not been identified. Thank you.
Councilmember Winn? As, seeing no further business before us, City Council meeting is adjourned at 9:29. Thank you.